I have the things.
I have the lights on now. Put that all over. Doctor, that.
No, but my name is. Uh, my name is. I'm a lady. Which they have. Perfect. Okay. To the first year. And trying to watch. I had a PDF of like sixteen I know. That's nine. I was fifty years old, but nine. It hasn't been. She said it's just like always me. She hasn't got. She called. Said it has had. Every one of them has a hundred year old windows. Twenty four. Yeah.
No, that one. You should have said. You answer those questions. Yeah. You gotta check.
You were in the last lady. Mary Martin. We're looking for. Mary.
Yeah. Okay.
So if she wants to find the livestream, she goes to.
Website.
Yeah, but she would search for city council livestream.
You know, our website, you get live movies and it's a.
Location.
Or see if you have to go places.
Problem.
Your buddy?
Deborah, did you get the package I left on your, on the chair?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Merry Christmas to me. You ought to have a lot of room now.
I told you last time.
I just.
Just try searching live meetings and see what comes up.
They heard. Christopher found out where he's going. He's going to USS Howard in Japan. Yokosuka. That's where it went. Yep. I said, well, he won't starve.
I've been to Tachikawa.
Yeah, it's a suburb of Tokyo. I mean, but his, he's got a college friend that's our, that's an engineer, a boarder. And so he'll know somebody on the ship and his friend's been there for two years already. Has another two years to go.
Is this, this after he graduates or is this a part of his journey?
This will, for surface warfare officers, they go to their first ship first and they start doing basically OJT and then they'll, they, they sign them off to get their PIN and then they send them to disposable. So, yeah, and he graduates the twenty first of April.
It's on the main.
Yeah.
And home stretch. He liked battle stations. They actually had fully gone to full firefighter gear and go in and they had to make the pocket of ship all on fire. They had to put out the fire and then they had a damage control where they worked in teams of two and they brought them in the room where there's a bunch of pipes, they shut, they sealed with the bulkheads and turn the waterworks on. And one picture that they showed, the water was halfway up one person's chest and everything. Like, thank God he's tall.
I clearly, I clearly remember everything that happened on the day that I got. Nineteen sixty seven, I can remember everything that happened.
And, and like, he, he's still loving the weather. Like right now it's thirty degrees up there in sunny. Under a wizard morning again, he loves it. So just as long as you're not doing that. All right, how are you?
Did you sit down all your patients?
Uh, I know for surgery on Tuesday, they're gonna move the bone shards and put the screw in my finger. And then the third of April is when they're gonna start the injections in my shoulder. So by the time it's time to go to the kid's graduation, hopefully I will be out of this getup and be able to travel without having to wear this. And then check your anger. I'm Irish. I'll be Irish.
Is it still here?
Be positive.
Is it still supposed to be your time? Is that it? Okay. We're gonna start with that.
You say that to you, what's your?
Would. It only takes, it only takes a little encouragement.
I really think that he inspired that. The livestream is on. Oh, okay. Yeah.
It's a presentation that I come to. I've seen him do a four hour version of it.
Oh, gosh.
But this was a fifty minute version, so I wanted to see what he's gonna do. He did a good job.
We're shooting for seven thirty and before.
What's that?
We're shooting for seven thirty and early.
I'm in.
Yeah. And then I've already told, uh, Merrill that if he talks very long, he has us all in power.
What are you doing?
Merrill Spillman. That's respect.
Oh, gotcha.
So we're trying to make some money out of this deal. He said, well, my thing is I cut real fast because maybe the question has to discharge a quarter, order a question. I want to give.
Did you want, oh, do you want to start the presentation? We can run this one or do we do one?
Um, so, no, I just thought I'd let you know, I got the other birthday this morning.
We can do our own?
What I did was I said to Larry, said, why don't you bring that up during citizens?
I was gonna start without you.
I could forward you the one I sent.
I got three.
I know, I'm just picking ideas.
Hey, 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 we're thinking positive now. Come on now.
Oh, you've been to All Local. Let's go on faster. Never a dull moment.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Mostly.
And he's looking for chips and stuff. He's gonna share with everyone.
I know, I know. Well, it's available at All Local right next door. If you haven't been there, go check it out. Have you seen that?
Best chips around.
That's from All Local.
All Local, right, right next door.
Surprisingly, they source all of their stuff All Local.
No, this is.
And if you wanna try duck eggs, if you wanna try duck eggs, they've got duck eggs over there.
Really?
Yeah. Straight from Schroeder House Farm.
Really good milk. Out of the last bottle of milk. But this is called dairy free queso potato chips.
Uh, cheese, never mind.
But they have other ones also.
I'm not a fan of cheese. As my dad put it, I never supported my dairy farmer family up in Wisconsin, so. I, I'm, I'm not a fan of cheese.
Why not?
I'm not a fan of dairy free.
And my dad's. Oh, no, 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 no. The Air Force sent me here. No, no, no. Yeah, my dad gave me a hard time and after, my son, my son is a cheese head. Ever since he could walk, he would come walking into the living room with a block of cheese, eating it, with the three labs following him. And we're like, do you wanna cut you a piece of cheese? Oh, no, I'm good, mommy. And keep walking. And he's like, okay. So I told my dad, I was like, see, he makes up for me not being a fan of cheese. When we go to Mexican restaurants, when I say no cheese, I get a funny look, so.
I know, right?
Yeah, no cheese.
I love cheese. Italian background.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, when we lived in Philly and we would go to, oh, yeah, when I say no cheese, they would look at me funny too. This was as a kid, so.
This is historical society?
Yes.
Maybe founding historical commission did. All right. You got about another twenty seconds. You all set up?
We're recording and the livestreams are on.
Nice.
My phone's silent for once.
For once.
It's all good.
And I just wanna remind council really quickly, please make sure you pull down your microphone so people can hear you.
Mr. King that sits way back.
All right, so we're gonna call this meeting to order at five thirty. We'll start with roll call.
Shana Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey for District Two.
Philip Kane, District Three.
Harold Stein, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. We're all here. Next, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing when we're done with that for the invocation.
Do you guys have American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Please remain standing. We have Pastor John from Vista Community Church.
If we could just bow our heads, we're gonna pray. Oh, God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for, Lord, so many blessings that we experience. Lord, we thank you that we live in a nation that is free. We thank you that it is governed by the people, Lord, for the people, so we thank you for that. We pray that even in this meeting, that all of the concerns that people have and all of the plans that are being fought over and contemplated, that God, you would orchestrate and guide. So we thank you that we could commit everyone to you, everyone that's here, into your hands. We pray your blessing. We pray for rain, God, we do pray for that, God. We pray that you help us, Lord, in every area of our lives, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please be seated. All right, next item is citizens' comments. I'll just ask anybody that wants to come up for citizens' comments, please step up to the podium. Just please give us your name and your address for the record and let's try and limit comments to about three minutes. I got my little timer if we need it.
Name is Jerry Hoag. I live on County Road four seven one one. Something to think about, what, what makes a good city? Probably a clean city, city with low crime, good schools, reasonable cost of taxes and services, and parks. So let's talk about the parks, the city park next to Castroville Land and Land School. The land was donated by former county commissioner Hilly Mangold to the city many, many, many years ago with the provision that it would be a park. And it is a park and I'm very happy to say that there's improvements going on. That's good. I think we could use probably some more improvements on the ball field. It doesn't look much different when I started playing there over fifty years ago, but that's okay. We're starting, we're going in the right direction. Castroville Regional Park. I mean, what, what a gem we have. I mean, it's a great, great park. Through the works of many folks over many years, we have a beautiful mothel use park that thousands of kids and adults use every year. For a small sum, this land was sold to the city with the provision it would become a park. This undoubtedly makes my Uncle Joe and Aunt Gertrude Hoag smile every day. Great deal. Okay, now we come to, I'm gonna call it a park, but it's due, due a purpose, obviously. Castroville Airport and Ballfields. This land was given to the city, if I'm not mistaken, by the United States government, who bought it from my grandfather, Albert Hoag, before or during World War Two or right when it started to make it an airport, which was great. Now I'm gonna focus on the ball fields. The ball fields at the airport have given thousands of young children and young adults opportunity to play baseball and softball since nineteen seventy five. I think that was probably the first age group to play on that field in nineteen seventy five. You know, our baseball and softball teams have both been to state on multiple occasions and our softball team even won a state championship. This would never have happened without the Medina Valley Youth Baseball Organization and its many volunteers who gave thousands of hours to build and maintain that facility and it's still going today. But I'm a little concerned now because there's talk about expanding the airport and possibly doing away with the baseball and softball complex. I really can't believe that this is even a possibility. I hope this is not about money. Most of the citizens of Castroville have probably never been to the airport proper, but most have made many trips to the baseball and softball complex. I understand that closing the airport is a very complicated issue. I do not have a Harvard Law degree. I'm just an unemployed retired general contractor. But I really think all options should be looked at before we make a deci, make a decision that I think most citizens of Castroville would oppose. Maybe a vote would make sense. Don't know. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Lang. I live at twelve hundred CR fifty seven eleven. I'm a landowner adjacent to the airport. So my comment is in regards to the airport zoning board and last month's airport master plan presentation. So why is the city council pursuing zoning and expansion of the airport to the potential detriment and future, of the future city developments and the families of Castroville? The previously proposed zoning will, to facilitate the airport expansion, would require additional land and would severely limit land use around the airport by decreasing commercial or residential property values, especially along both sides of Highway ninety. Alsatian Oaks plans have already been impacted and future Alsatian Oaks residents could be affected if the airport expansion attracts larger aircraft by reducing safety and increasing noise pollution in that community. This could have significant effect on home values and reducing the commercial potential or home density along Highway ninety, as previously proposed in the zoning, could greatly reduce Castroville, Castroville's future tax base. Current airport expansion plans also significantly affects the youth of the community. As Mr. Hoag just said, two of the biggest places that this could be seen would be in the Medina Valley Youth Baseball Association and the Medina Valley ISD School District, the middle school and the high school. This season, the NVYBA has registered six hundred and eighty-one kids and serves to promote the future of the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the residents of the city of Castroville and surrounding Medina Valley area by offering this youth baseball, baseball program. This league also builds camaraderie between the kids that will be playing together in high school and has helped feed in many athletes that has allowed the NVISD to go to state in softball and progress in baseball as well. In the, in the airport expansion plans, the ball fields will become hangers and the fields where Castroville's parents and grandparents go as a community to watch their kids play will be gone. The NVISD middle school and high school that are both adjacent to the airport could also be impacted. NVISD is projected to nearly double in enrollment within the next ten years and for twenty twenty three, the district's average test ranking is in the top twenty percent of Texas public schools, enticing more families to move to Castroville for good schools. A bond is being voted on in May that will include additional buildings and improvements. Zoning and expansion of the airport would place restrictive limits and permitting on the school's future infrastructure improvements for new classrooms to stadium improvements. So I just wanna ask, and I'm concerned as, as a resident and for the future of my kids, is the loss of Castroville's landowner values, community youth sports fields, and a hindrance to the development and growth of NVISD worth the financial contribution of some business jets and a few skydivers? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I wanna mention, we unfortunately can't comment on anything that is not on the agenda. So for citizens' comments, we can't comment, but I wanna make sure that everybody knows that if you go to our, our website, it has all of our phone numbers on there, all of our email addresses on there for city council, for myself, so please do reach out and speak to us to, to address some of these things and, and get into them in more detail. I know you use that number. Did you wanna speak?
My name is Jan Rosa. My husband is Colonel Bob Solenberger, thirty-three years in United States Army Medical Corps, retired, and he's also my resident historian, which has surprised me as long, as well as my next door, one of, one of my neighbors who's in Alsatian, that the historical significance of the airport, as the gentleman before me, Mr. Hoag had spoken.
Just for the record, could you state the, your address as well?
Oh, my address. The property owner is one four four Lower Lacoste Road. It's eighty-eight point eight six acres. It has an irrigation well and it adjoins the airport. And it's not always been friendly to us with drainage problems and so on, but nonetheless, we're strong believers in the airport maintaining itself. I did attend the twenty-eighth meeting, the meeting when Mr. Dixon went at length and explained the very, the long range, long, long, long range plans and put to rest a lot of what I thought was misinformation, misallocation, and also hype in the neighborhood and created a lot of gossip, which was negative and not really quite apparent. However, my opinion is that right now, the historical reference to the airport was told to me that my own property had lost land, just as this gentleman did back in World War Two, and that we should be outraged at the fact the government came in and took property and I would have had a hundred acres instead of what I have now and so on. And as they were lamenting about how terrible that was, I said, well, boy, at least we're not doing Sieg Heil because there were quite a few people that got killed that were trained at those airports. We weren't the only one. They were trained and they never came back. So at least we're still here to entertain ourselves in this quaint little town. Again, I think that the, the meeting that I attended and we, I watched you've gone overboard trying to be, how shall I say, trying to look forward and maintain the presence of what goes on in this city, realizing there's the old city and the new city, trying to appease everyone. But again, I don't have any agenda. My land is farmed, it's used right now, it's historically owned by the Beedigers and the Halties and so on. So we have quite a, we've been here since ninety-five and we've watched the city change. I've not seen any city council, not one, as good as this one. And I said, I've been through a lot of city councils, a lot of mayors, more than a hooker on Saturday night and on Houston Street in San Antonio. And this has been one of the best city councilmen, people who've gone beyond trying to, and I'm not kissing up to you because I don't have a horse in this race, I don't have any benefit from this, except that I know what's gone on in the past and I think I've given you all my history about some of the nightmares in the eighties and so on. And we've come a long way and I hope we could, or the city and the people who are concerned can do the same. Thank you for your time. You all stay well.
Thank you, Mrs. Ewald.
Thank you.
Dr. Kathy Ewald, I'm an airport tenant. I'm seeking tonight to express.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, Kathy Ewald. Oh, you are a home address or the airport address?
Home address is fine.
I'm sorry?
Home address is fine.
Nine zero two two High Branch, San Antonio, seven eight two five four.
Thanks.
I'm seeking tonight to express my continued support for the Castroville Airport, also known as KCVB. While it's easy to fantasize economic gains, if the airport property could be sold to developers, there would be considerable collateral damage to the Castroville, Medina County, and national communities. Castroville Airport is a valuable part of the national security and aviation systems. The US Department of Homeland Security identifies over four hundred general aviation airports in Texas, of which KCVB is one, as assets of critical infrastructure. The Texas Homeland Security Strategic Plan identifies sixteen critical sectors, only four of which are called lifeline sectors. Aviation is a lifeline sector. Our federal emergency management, emergency management agency, FEMA, further explains the necessity of airports by identifying them as community lifelines, which, when stabilized during emergency, in emergency or disaster, help enable all other aspects of society to function. Locally, the Castroville Airport provides a training space for many military and civilian pilots because of its characteristics. Without a tower, pilots in training can practice in an environment that is less busy and therefore with less task saturation as they develop their aviating skills. The length of the runway is also attractive and provides a destination training space for many instructors as they guide their, and develop the knowledge, skills, and dispositions of their student pilots. Another valuable asset of KCVB came to light nearly one year ago when the Dos Goat Fire set over one thousand acres of Medina County ablaze. KCVB was the nearest airport to the fire and provided a critical base of operations for service for aerial firefighting. Blackhawks and firebought single engine tank, air tankers were used to drop water, to slow the spread of the fire, and to assess containment. Lastly, KCVB provides direct economic impact. For example, an estimated two hundred golfers and hunters land at KCVB each year to partake in their sport locally. The newest KCVB master plan is about to be released and I'm anxious to see how much the economic impact of KCVB has increased. I expect it will be higher than the previously published four million dollar estimate. As an aviation enthusiast, I am extremely grateful that the current local and national agreements prohibit the airport's land usage from any purpose other than aviation. And I hope that my comments tonight will help all of us to see that the airport is of great value to Castroville and the surrounding community, besides giving children, big and small, reasons to look skyward, to imagine, and to dream. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak for citizens' comments?
Cynthia Lang.
It's twelve hundred County Road fifty seven eleven. Thank God for having us up today. I just wanna reiterate what Mr. Hoag said before, that the Castroville Airport and the Medina Valley Youth Baseball League is a integral part of Medina County and Castroville. And what we do is we see our grandkids, our kids have played there all this time and we wanna keep that open for all these kids. I know in the future plans, we've seen on the airport, that they have that scheduled for hangers and stuff in the long-term plans and we just wanted to make sure that we have these available, if not, we have another opportunity somewhere else within the city that the community can gather and join together to watch and play baseball and softball. I am a landowner that's adjacent to the airport, have some questions on that, I've seen the long-term plans on that and have several questions on, have there been studies for the Texas Quality Commission? Have there been drainage studies? Have all these other studies been done necessary for the increase in the growth of the airport? Right now, our property is greatly affected by the drainage that comes off the airport and runs through our property. And with the new buildings and that, that are going on across the subdivisions, that will increase the drainage to Flat Creek along with the airport drainage. And have there been studies done, what the, the impact would be for those issues? Last week, we, last month, we came, we saw some presentations by the airport zone and the engineering firm and there were some, several discussions on some of the options that were going on. And I noticed some conflicts between what was being discussed and what we saw on, on the thing, on the airport. And I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page, that we get the same story from, from everybody, so we all understand what is going on and what is, what the plans are for the future. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments?
I want to talk about the airport.
It's okay.
David Murs, one forty-eight Village Path. Several months ago, I shared data with city council about the Country Village Road Refinishing Project. I still hold that Country Village does not contribute enough taxes to the city to cover the five hundred thousand cost of the road upgrade. Then and now, my neighbors worry more about drainage, which, according to the recent drainage Drainage Master Plan, may cost another four hundred thousand to fix. Furthermore, it was shared with me that, like River Bluff, Country Village is likely to require substantial utility replacements in the near future, where the neighborhood's balance sheet is already, like our yards, dramatically underwater for the coming decades. In decades past, someone concluded that my neighborhood would be a nice boost to the city's coffers. I wasn't born yet, but I imagine someone said it would benefit the city by, among other things, expanding the city's corporate limits, sales tax, property tax, and utility system customer bases. Their city administrator may have remarked late in a council meeting, new isn't just paying for new, new is paying for old. Decades ago, Country Village did make good on all of those promises. It did bring an infusion of cash, but it also increased long-term liabilities. And when they revealed themselves, my neighborhood became a red line in the city's ledger. Yes, sales tax does more than property tax. Yes, commercial does more than residential. The fact remains that my neighborhood was expected to be a benefit to the city, and from a financial perspective, that initial rosy assessment was demonstrably wrong. Today, the city needs cash. We are struggling to cover the full lifecycle costs of our infrastructure. We borrowed millions to pay for maintenance, repair, and necessary replacement. These long-term costs, which increase with the area served, are far too high for our current tax base per area at current tax rates. In the past, we've closed that gap with deferred maintenance, debt, or higher taxes. Recently, a tempting fourth option appeared. New neighborhoods could give infusions of cash, for a while. Enter stage right, Agenda Item nineteen A, a development agreement with NP Homes. I am sure someone has produced numbers showing that a development agreement will benefit the city by, among other things, expanding the city's corporate limits, sales tax, property tax, and utility system customer bases, just as someone said before my neighborhood was built. But if those numbers show a net benefit to the city with long-term costs included, then they imply four bold promises. The first three kind of build on each other, so there are really only one. First, this development will be at least as productive per long-term cost as Castroville today, big stores, little stores, houses, apartments, and all. Second, this development will be more productive per long-term cost than Castroville today. Unlike what's here now, it will cover its long-term maintenance, repair, and replacement bills. Third, this development will be substantially more productive per long-term cost. It will not only cover its own bills, but also produce enough extra money to incentivize or reimburse the developer. Fourth, and perhaps hardest to believe, it will continue to do this for multiple decades despite an uncertain economy and housing market. Maybe the council has seen something that makes you believe those promises. I haven't, so I don't. If you haven't either, I urge you to vote no when you get to Agenda Item nineteen A. Without an agreement, NP Homes may build something unpleasant. So be it. Without utility service, they may build nothing at all. In the future, there are better ways to improve the city's tax base, ways that don't require incentives, ways that don't increase our infrastructure liabilities, and ways that don't require months of secretive executive sessions. Asked me about RC zoning after the meeting, I've got a whole manifesto. For now, I urge you to invest in the city and citizens we already have, rather than helping line some developers' pockets while you worry about the city we may one day have. Thank you for the extra minute, your consideration, and your service to the city.
Thank you. All right. Would anybody else like to speak for Citizens' Comments? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item, which is consent agenda. On this, we have minutes for February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, regular-called city council meeting. We have approved the resolution for a community project funding resolution and approve equipment purchase for new police vehicles.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next item is city administrator report. On here, the items are IT Needs Analysis, City Hall Remodel Update, Downtown Master Plan, UDO, which is Uniform Development Ordinance, or Unified Development Ordinance. Next is Balanced Scorecard, and finally, Text dot Thoroughfare Planning.
I would just ask at this point, you've had a chance to review my report. Do you have any questions on the items that are listed? Is there anything that I can expound upon? I know Councilman Dyer submitted a list of questions, which I responded to. Some of those involve some of these items. I'm happy to clarify anything.
One question, I'm sure everybody else has seen it, if they take ninety towards San Antonio, that they're taking a bobcat and starting to dig up along ninety with the text dot is, heading back towards-
It's a cable barrier.
Okay, that's, because with what we talked about, what happened with brief last meeting, I was just making sure that, okay. Never mind.
I'm pretty certain that head-on collision that happened a couple of months ago is the, one of the reasons why they just moved that up.
I read your report. I understand everything. But because of the agenda, I didn't know if anybody here might want a little quick little update of what you-
Sure.
So you're gonna give like a two-sentence thing on each one.
Sure. So quickly on the IT Needs Analysis, this is something we discussed quite a while ago. We talked about, I had, staff had prepared an RFP. Council determined that we really needed to go through a needs analysis, hire a firm to do that. We sought out several firms following TML, having made some connections there, and ultimately landed on BC Three. They cost us just a little bit shy of twenty-five thousand dollars to do an IT Needs Analysis for us, and then prepare an RFP. Then, once we get the RFP, we'll find out what our costs could be going forward to have IT outsourced. So that was kind of the update there. That should be, the RFP will be ready by June. They're doing in-person interviews with us in March later this month. The City Hall remodel, we're in the process of doing a needs analysis there, just having an architect meet with each of the staff members that would be housed in City Hall and talk about space requirements, et cetera. And then, we need to take that to the Texas Historic Commission to have them approve doing the addition on the back, as we discussed earlier. On the downtown master plan, that was just kind of let you know that that is in the CIP. Now that we've discussed that as a council, the staff is trying to, you know, make efforts to make these CIP items a reality. So within the next couple of months, we should see an RFP coming to council for your approval. And then, once we, once you approve that RFP, we'll go and issue it, and we'll see what kind of response we get there. But the goal is to look at downtown revitalization. On the UDO, as the mayor correctly identified, that's a Unified Development Ordinance. The goal of the Unified Development Ordinance is to codify our zoning, our subdivision, basically any code that'd be related to development into one place. We've talked about, I know with planning and zoning, basically over the last year since I've been here, about the need to update the UDO. It is not in the CIP. I think that's an oversight, frankly, so it's something that we should probably look at adding and funding. But we are working on developing an RFP for that process as well. We've been doing a Band-Aid approach so far by utilizing other consultants. When these developers have come forward, we've required the developer to go through a consultant to look at their land plan, and that is, that's kind of a stopgap, but it's an expensive stopgap in some respects. Now, the developers are paying for that cost, so that cost is on them to take care of. The Balanced Scorecard is something that grew out of last May timeframe, May, August, when we did our retreat with, oh my gosh. I can't think of his name. Chris, yeah, Ronald Cox, Ron Cox, Ron Cox, Ron Cox Consulting. We talked about the kind of the need to define success for the council and for the, for staff, so we could be on the same page and then measure that success and do that across the services. Balanced Scorecard is a method of doing that. I'm in the process of identifying a consultant that can help us with that. When that group or groups are identified, I'll bring them to you for approval, and we'll see where we go from there and what the timeframe is. But that would involve workshops with council to talk about priorities and what you think is most important, which service areas, how we're gonna measure success, et cetera. And then, on the Text dot Thoroughfare Planning, the big update there is, you all had approved a task order with Simple City. The total amount of the task order was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That was anticipating developing a new thoroughfare plan with Text dot in conjunction with Text dot. Unfortunately, in our very first meeting with the developers in Text dot, they pretty much killed that concept. They killed the Boulevard concept, and we've expended fifteen, just a little over fifteen thousand dollars. I don't anticipate spending any more on that effort. We may shift gears and look at doing stuff with the developers, working more on the private side and their land planning. But again, that, that cost should be shifted to developers. So that task order, even though it was approved in a not-to-exceed amount, I think we spent all we're gonna spend there. So that's, that's all of those items. If there's any other questions or anything, I'm happy to answer them.
And I wanted to, just for the clarity of some of the folks here, Scott, you addressed it very well with those of us who have been through this process and understand it really well, and I really appreciate that. And looking at the priorities for the City Hall remodel, this City Hall is something that we are stewards of, and it's one of the things that has been left to fall into disrepair. And so, part of this is just being good stewards, making sure that we are taking care of this and being responsible with city property, but also looking at the future expansion as city staff starts to grow. We want to make sure that we have good accommodations for them, so that we can, we spend less on remodeling something, which we should be great stewards of anyway, than we would in building new buildings and increasing that way. On the downtown master plan, there's a lot of things that have been going on. You talked about Lyons Park, that's just kind of on the outskirts of it, but what we're trying to do is make sure that with new people that are coming in to, we have a group that is on their own fixing up buildings in downtown, and they've looked at doing some public improvements. We have also looked at Houston Square needing some additional work. We've looked at different areas. We've gotten grants, we've gotten funding, and we want to make sure that we're doing that very methodically, not piecemealing it together, but looking at it as a good overall master plan, so that we have good direction. The Uniform Development Ordinance, Larry can speak to this, the counties, for developers to come in, it's very confusing to them, it's very easy to miss things. So we want to make sure that we have the rules down that describe to the developers exactly what they can do, what they can't do, what they should do, what they shouldn't do. And it's really about trying to grow the city very intelligently, very carefully, very methodically, and making sure that the new development has the least impact possible on the existing city. And then, the thoroughfare planning, we continue to work with Text dot, they continue to be Text dot, and they're, they're very, the partners that we have at Text dot, I think, are phenomenal. The individuals that we're working with, very collaborative, they're very open with us, they work very well with us, they say no incredibly well, but that's being Text dot. So we were trying to do something better than the Titten Lane Super Street that they're gonna install. We were, we knew that it was kind of a hail mary, and we lost. So they will build what they will build, and we will continue to try and help encourage them to do better. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of context to that.
Do you have those pictures that are in the packet, if you want me to bring them up, Mayor?
I think that if anybody wants more, you're talking about for the super street? I think if anybody wants more, I put out some information on social media. If you want more information, please contact us. We're happy to kind of let you know what's going on. It's, the landscape east of town is changing quickly, and, yeah, it's challenging. There's nothing about this that's easy. All right. Anything else? Any other questions, comments on the city administrator report? All right. Next item, discussion and possible action on establishing a tree trimming policy for the maintenance of the city's electric distribution system. And this is brought up, if I may just preface this by saying, this is brought up because one of the biggest causes of outage in a city with overhead electric is trees. We were at a CPS little, kind of, all of their cities that they were serving, we went to one of their little seminar things, and they were talking about how increasing the amount of money that they were spending on tree trimming reduced the outages substantially. And we have, that was one of the deferred maintenance pieces that had not been covered in years and years and years. And we had dedicated to providing better electrical service by making sure that we were trimming the trees. But what happened is, we used the electrical standards, and one example was September Square looked kind of like we had gone to Supercuts and just got the receptionist cutting our hair. It was, it was, so this is looking at, how do we deal with this so that we have a standard to, to Scott's credit, he and staff worked on getting something together. So we're gonna talk about what that standard is with Medina Electric, and then figure out what is good about that, what is bad about it, what do we want to increase, what do we want to improve? We want to make sure that we open up better communications with people that are having to go through this, and so that's, that's the purpose of this. So Scott, please. That was a longer intro than I meant to.
Sure. So we've got the, we had proposed utilizing the Medina Electric Cooperative Standard for trimming trees. Staff really hasn't backed off of that. I think that's a good standard to utilize. It protects our wires. The issue we've had is, as we have done this work, we've incurred significant cost because homeowners will come out and kind of treat the consultant that's hired by the city as their personal, you know, tree trimmer, and, you know, demand they stop, et cetera. We have a, you know, we have a duty to protect and preserve our electric distribution system. That's what we're there to do. We send out notifications that we're coming, we let them know what those standards are. We do need to get that on our website, so we can like link, link that as well. That's something that's in the works. But what staff is seeking from council is direction on how to handle those issues, whether, you know, we want to accommodate them. In the past, basically, we have been. This is a small town, and we don't want to be too uppity with folks that are paying our salaries. At the same time, again, it's also every, so Phil has an issue with a tree that's out there, everybody else pays for that issue that he has because we're paying these guys by the hour. So if we delay them by five or six hours, there's additional cost. And that was our concern, is how do we deal with that? What is the direction council would like us to proceed? Do we just use our judgment? Or do you want to, you know, put in place specific protocols for when people have issues with their tree? And that's what we're opening up for. There's not, you'll note that in my, in the agenda summary form, I didn't anticipate an action tonight. It was more about discussion, just get an idea where your mind is, so that staff can then take those comments and prepare an actual policy document that would later be drafted and brought to you for final approval.
I got a question on the line clearance specifications. Under clearance exceptions, it says live oaks. So the trees at September Square, those are the, those are live oaks, right?
Are those live oaks? They're mostly pecans, aren't they? Pecans and red oaks, I thought. Yeah.
Okay. Because I didn't know if they would fall underneath the exception there, because they were one of the ones that got butchered real bad, and I didn't know if they would be protected or what have you.
Well, I think that the thing that we've got to look at is, well, so the, the people that cut this, they are, they weren't arborists. They were linemen. They knew how to clear things out. And so, what we're talking about here is, I think it's both our overall standards and then maybe city, city property standards. For individuals, and we had this, Country Village has a lot of mature trees, and there were a lot of things that happened in Country Village. I think that was a prime example. I think all around, we've got mature trees. But when people don't trim their own trees and keep them from that, then we have to go in and do this, but they don't necessarily know that.
And I know last meeting, we talked about the, what, the buffer zone or what we, what is it called? That the city has-
The clearance?
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the-
The right-of-way?
Right-of-way. Because some garbage trees will grow and get into the electrical and everything, and we'll go out there to clear it because they're causing problems. And I suggested that we get the, hey, gee whiz, did you know the city has so many feet right-of-way on either side of the, that way we can go in and-
Like easements.
Easements, there we go. Yeah, 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 yeah. That way, people know when the city comes out to take care of those items. It's because it's in our easement, and it's to keep the electrical from not getting hampered during a storm or something.
So it sounds like what you're recommending is that we put together a communications plan, almost like a, something that we can send out to, did you know, kind of thing, an education-
Just like we have for like the brush and bolt pickup, like we did. It would, it would be behoove of us, that way everybody knows, but hey, did you know? It would, it would be behoove of us, that way everybody knows, but hey, did you know?
All right. Questions, comments over here?
The staff came in and recommended that we try the MECC standards and it's clear that, that created a lot of problems. I think that we're kind of faced with a decision. If we're going to stick with MECC, then we're going to have to develop additional standards and we're going to have to put them in writing and we're going to have to create a set of standards that's written down that we can enforce. We obviously are not able to enforce these. Or perhaps we ought to consider going out with an RFP to other companies that do this as a profession and get an RFP from one or two other companies that would contain their standards and we'd have something to assess. I'm not a tree expert. I don't know what to put in there and maybe some of you are, but I, I couldn't help you. But I'm sure there's tree professionals out there that have a set of standards because there's a lot of trees in San Antonio and they seem to get cut. So I think we ought to consider going out for an RFP and get multiple sets of standards that the city can assess and come to us with a recommendation and, and try to go on because I don't think the process we're following is going to be very successful.
I think that we, you've got to look at two different things. One, so CPS does basically the same thing as MECC. I think this is a, an electrical system standard. We don't have a city utility for tree trimming services. And so if people want to hire arborists to trim their trees to make sure that they keep them off of the power lines, then they have a lot of control over what happens in that area. If they don't, and the city has to come in, basically it's like if you leave your, your abandoned car on the street, the city has to come in and clear it out and get that. It's the same thing with the trees. So I think that communicating that with people, I think it's not like if you say, put it out to RFP, if you put it out to RFP to electrical people, you're going to get the exact same kind of stuff.
I'm talking about putting it out to tree people, like.
But we're not.
Companies that are tree companies.
But we're not in the business of tree trimming. We're in the business of making sure the electrical system works.
Well, I take issue with that. We are in the business of tree trimming because we own the utility system and we're required to keep the trees away from it. So somebody has to force it.
Yeah.
And the point is that the standards we're using are creating the city staff lots of problems. They're, they're put into the issue resolution mode, which is not fair to them, puts the load on the city administrator. Everybody's upset, so we're not making anybody happy. I just think we need, we need a little bit more information about standards and.
Are those standards asked for the provider? I mean, those are CPS standards, right?
Well, these are specifically from Medina, Medina Electric Co-op, but you're going to see the same thing from CPS, from any electrical company. It is, their standards are not, how do you address a live oak versus a pecan versus a trash berry, I mean hackberry? How do you address these things? It is how do you keep them off of the electrical system?
I think Councilman King has a comment.
Well, I haven't gotten over here yet.
That's why I was very patient. No problem.
Thank you. He's going to use that.
Herb, I think the current companies doing this cedar beetle, they are, they, they, they're all over the country doing this, but they're not arborists like, like the mayor said. They are, they're skilled at keeping the trees off of our power poles. I think, Larry, you all use, the county uses cedar beetle, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, I've heard.
Anything major, this will be you.
They're really good at what they do. But I also, like the mayor said, we, we, we do hire arborists to come in and take care of our trees because we do care, you know, they're being trimmed up and it's expensive to do it. But as far as, you know, I'm also tired of, I'm sure all the citizens are, of having our power go out because we've blown another circuit breaker because the branches are up against the, the wires and they have to stay off the wires. They just have to. So I think, but I, but I do, Councilman Sheena Martinez, but I, maybe if we put something and again, in the utility bill and plus other places and just as general information, hey, the reason we lose power is because we have these trees and we've been, the city's been real lax in maintaining these and we have to step up. It's costing us money. But if you have any questions at all, you know, you can give them the option. But I think if we explain it to them and then, because I think you all are giving out notices and everything and I, yes, in some respects, you're butchering up the trees, but what they're doing is they're keeping the branches off of the lines. And if we go in, if we were to hire a landscaper to go in there and cut every residential lot in town where it's aesthetically pleasing, it's going to cost a fortune. So, so I do, I know the company well. I've worked for many, many years and they're a very professional company in what they do.
Great, thank you. Councilman Kerry?
Yes, given the fact that we have experienced cost overruns on the clearing projects from twice to three times what we'd anticipate. And I, I brought this up before, I would like to consider at least examine the cost comparison of that with, rather than modifying the tree for the electrical line, modifying the electrical line for the tree and putting some utilities underground instead of destroying heritage trees in the city. Because when I looked at what happened at September Square, what happened 0471 and down on Fiorella Street, I mean, those, those, those trees have tremendous value to the ambiance and to the homeowners and to the city in terms of making this a beautiful place. And when you look at that tree and you go, oh my gosh, what did they do to that tree? Well, you just defeated that effort. So I'd like to at least examine the possibility of rerouting electrical underground when we're looking at heritage oaks and heritage trees. Thank you.
So it sounds like, I'm going to try and summarize. It sounds like, well, I'm going to summarize and put in a couple of other ideas. Like we want to look at doing a, an information campaign to educate people about what the rules are, how they can manage their own trees so that they don't get to the point where we have to come in and clear them out, get that, get the standards out to them, get them instructions on how they can maintain that. I think Sheena called it a did you know kind of campaign and with a communications plan along with that. So I think we're looking to come up with some kind of solution for that. I think it would be a good idea to get an escalation sheet together with contact information so that when they go out there, they know we are doing our job, this is what we have to do, these are our policies and they can carry the policies, they can give the contact sheet because what people want is, they want the ability to have a voice in, in their home. And so we give them that, that sheet and just need to figure out, do they then move on from that one location? Do they demobilize? Do they give it a certain amount of time? I don't know the answer to that, but I think we can come up with some, something that is reasonable, that doesn't cost everybody else in the city additional money from that demobilization, remobilization. And I think that finally is setting the city property standards where we, so September Square, Houston Square, at our different parks, so that we are being, again, being good stewards of our own trees and giving that demonstration of how we take care of things because we are responsible. What happened at September Square shouldn't have happened because we are responsible for those trees. We should have had those done specifically by an arborist instead of by the electrical company because those are things that we, that's, that's my opinion. That's not council's decision. But I think that that, showing that stewardship is something that we can do to set that example. Is that, did I, do you like the, the additional things and did I summarize the other stuff or did I miss anything?
The underground electric was the last item. I don't, I don't know exactly how to address that other than, you know, you can't just do it for one house or for one block. You know, to do underground electric, it's significantly more than what it will cost it to trim the trees. So the question is, you know, is it, at what point does council want to consider that as an option, going underground with electric? And where would you consider doing that? And I think that's a kind of almost totally different question because it's, from a cost comparison, there, there is no comparison.
Well, I was also comparing that to the, to the value of the, you know, 36 inch diameter oak tree that's been there for 200 years, so.
And that's what these, you know, these standards try to address that on some level. So you see there's clearance exceptions mainly for live oak and not rural, rural cedar. The pruning standards, they're, they're to follow the, a field pocket guide for qualified line clearance tree workers. So there's a, there's standards in there that are meant to address those types of concerns. Yeah, I think one of the, unfortunately, one of the issues is that trees have been planted underneath those lines, you know, for many years.
It's going to be the issue because some families just cannot afford to hire an arborist to do that. It's going to be very, very expensive. But the trees have to be cut. We can't have the whole town suffer an outage so one person's tree can remain beautiful. Just not going to be able to do that. So we have standards, they need to be met. And if we don't like these standards, I think the mayor's point's valid, we're probably going to get similar standards from other companies. We just need to show the homeowners that we've tried and these are the standards that have to be met.
So I think the items that you summarized, adding an educational piece component, a notification piece component, and then some kind of process that if there is a complaint, here's how that's handled in the field by the consultant, you know, by the contractor doing the work and by staff and ultimately by the city council should you get those calls.
Yeah, I like that. I think it catches people off guard because it hadn't been done for so long. And honestly, I didn't, before we went through all this, I didn't know all of those standards. This has been a learning process for me and I've had the benefit of actually sitting here to be able to learn that, but a lot of the people, they don't. So I think that'll be good. All right. Next item is update and appropriate action on airport fencing project.
So with this, just as a reminder, council kind of appointed, Councilman Kerry to be the council's representative to meet with our airport manager, David Kirkpatrick. They did meet out on site and have worked with a plan. That plan has been submitted and is in your packet, but at this time, I'd turn the time over to, to Councilman Kerry to kind of brief you on where that stands.
Well, there's been a lot of action courtesy of our airport manager that I did not have privy to, but, but he did show us that he got five estimates for fencing and one of them came in significantly lower than the others. We're looking at about 11,000 feet of deer proof fence around the airport. We discussed locations for gates and locations for the fence itself with regards to the boundary line and there are areas where we're going to have to pull away from the boundary just because of drainage features and the New County Road that goes around the north end of the airport. But those, those should not be of any consequence. So there is in your packet, the sketches that were produced of, of the areas that are being prepared for fencing, basically from, is it Jaggi Lane?
Jaggi Services Company Incorporated?
No, I meant the road.
Oh.
Yeah. Kemp Lane was, goes down by the camps. But anyway, from, from the last dog leg where the, the New County Road leaves the airport property, all the way around the north end, past the entrance gate, around behind the ball fields and along the north and east lines, all the way back down to the 26 acre tract, I think it is, that's at the southeast corner of the airport. The plan is now that I'm up on top of the alignment that we're trying to accomplish, plan to be out there even this week to set stakes. So that's where we're at.
Two questions. Where's the cattle guard going to go? And question number two is to all you A&amp;M graduates, is a 10 foot by 37 foot cattle guard going to keep deer off the airport?
Phil, you had a question?
Well, one of them is what Herb said, or I should say. But right now, traffic coming into the terminal building, are they, it's not going to go through a gate? There is, so it's an opening that'll always stay open?
The plan was for a cattle guard.
So, so that's where the cattle guard is? Or is the cattle guard where you're crossing? In other words, right here, there says no gate in this area?
Yes, that's correct.
On the road, right there.
So that's where the cattle guard goes?
Yes, where the blue and yellow lines meet across that road.
If, I, I don't know if the cattle guard stops deer. I only know they stop, because they can, I know a deer can jump 10 feet.
Right.
But I don't know, but I think you probably ought to figure that one out because it sounds like people in the audience are pretty adamant that that won't keep deer out.
Now, we need to experiment some. I know that, you know, by installing a number of these gates, we'll be able to chase your, chase the deer off of the property, but you know, it may require some trial and error on our part. If we have to put in a secondary cattle guard or space them out a certain distance, I don't know.
Have we talked to some of the farmers that use cattle guards and if they keep deer out or not?
I haven't had those conversations.
I, I have.
Oh.
And they won't.
They don't.
Deer is agile enough to walk the pipes.
If, if our farmer, if the property grows a desirable crop with that for deer, they'll go across cattle real quick. And even, and it's 10 foot, I think, is the dimensions?
10 by 37.
10 by 37, yeah.
The, the stats say cattle guards appear to be effective of reducing deer crossings. Although the number of deer traveling through openings was reduced, 95% overall deer apparently remain able to occasionally cross.
I think the question would be is where the deer are going to be coming and traveling at that point in time. Sometimes cattle guard, if positioned properly, if the rest of the place is fenced, it works fine. But I, most of the deer are coming from the river and from Flat Creek, low grounds. I don't know if they come up that, I don't know. That's hard to say. But a cattle guard on its own will stop the deer.
They have to find that opening on that road that is 30, you know, 37 feet wide. They've got to be at that spot.
Then you'll find an hard.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, I'll see it where they, if it's around a rest property of the terms, I don't know.
In the interest of time, I think that what we're saying is that we need to look at this a little bit further and make sure that we have a solution that will be actually effective against them.
Can we go to Texas Parks and Wildlife or Tech dot, find, find someone who's a fence expert who can advise us?
Game warder.
What other people, other cities do in Texas? Because I hate to spend $20,000 on a cattle guard and have to replace it with a gate.
Contact our local game wardens here.
Yeah. I think we should study this a little more before we make a decision on the gate.
We'll keep them out. I know that, I mean, fencing is the ultimate. The issue is when you have a, when you have a crossing like this, other than a gate, the issue with a gate is a public right of way. We talked about that and then Paul and David investigated where, where could we possibly put a gate? You know, the, where it makes sense is closer end of the airport. Well, once you do that, is there electric close to, close by and able to, that will, enable operation of that gate? And then how much more fence are you building because, well, now you moved the gate further in down that road? So those are all issues that we kind of struggle with. You know, my thought is we do some trial and error and put up the fence. Like I said, there is a, I, I don't accept the notion that, that they'll 100% find that opening and that they'll just flood through. I'm not saying that none can get through, but that they'll use that one street because they aren't typically coming that direction. They're usually coming from.
Well, if, if I may, we're just going to speculate on this right now because we don't have any experts in here and we don't have the ability to figure it out right now. So I think that what we're saying is that we want to continue to move forward with the, the fence, but let's do it smart. Let's not do it through trial and error. Let's figure out the best solution ahead of time and not build something that's not effective.
The upside is that the staking will not cost the city anything. So we will move forward, the fence project minus the, the cattle guard until we can figure out what actually worked? Is that the goal?
I don't recommend that because I think if you put that fence, that yellow section of fence around the baseball field and the expert comes and tells you to put a gate in, we talked about this at the last meeting. in, we talked about this at the last meeting, the consensus was the gate would be somewhere on south on that road, probably at the south end of the ball field or closer to the terminal building. So if you want to put fence in, go ahead and do it all except maybe that piece that goes around the ball field. That's the only part that would be up for.
We did discuss that, and the downsides of putting the gate down closer to the facility is that, one, you'd have to, one, have electricity there. Two, if the fence or the gate failed, or the individual in there didn't have the proper credentials, they would either have, we would have to either build a cul-de-sac there so that they could turn around, or that individual would end up having to back out several thousand feet to the nearest intersection. So those were, those were also considered.
You could just bring it up to one side of the building and the other side of the building, and the building on this side is exposed. Would you bring up the fence a little bit like that? I guess that's what I thought about last time.
So, again, in the interest of time, can we, can we go through this outside of the city? I think that there are a lot of different options, but let's go through it. Let's go back to the, to the drawing board and take a look at that.
Okay.
Is that right? Okay. So I think that what we're saying is the yellow section just around the ball fields, you can start on the-
Do the blue.
Yeah, do, start on the blue. I mean, it's going to take them time to do that anyway, and it's a per foot item, so we just need to come up with something else that's a better solution.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that? Next item is update from city attorney on the status of the airport zoning board. And again, I'm going to try and, I'm going to shorten my intro this time if I can. So we've been going through this. We said before, we found many areas where we could do better, and so we're trying not to repeat the mistakes of the past. This is a, this has been an FAA requirement. The city approached this back in the 90s, I think with fairly similar results, and we did not learn from that. We didn't research it until afterward, and we found that we did basically the same thing, came up with basically the same results, and it, it's, it wasn't good. And so what we've done is gone back and had, instead of going with a citizens committee to begin with, we had the attorneys handle it so that, so our city attorney is working with the, the TexDOT aviation and FAA people to find out what the actual requirements are, to make sure that they are legally enforceable, to make sure that we are doing things that are legal, and that we are not, we're not imposing unduly on our neighbors, that we're being good community stewards. And so this is, we've been going through a lot of this in executive session because a lot of this is talking about things that, that could be negatively impactful to the city, so those need to be done in executive session. But I did want to have an open session to give you the progress. We are not through this. We are not at the point where we're ready to restart the board. We wanted to talk about what the city attorney has found out, what some of the protections are going to be in place. We're going to do this as quickly as feasible, but as slowly as we need to, and we'll do it with a lot of communication in between. So this is a part of being that open communication transparency. With that-
Right. So mayor, one of the first things that I do want to clarify is, you know, closed session wasn't about the adoption of the regulations. Closed sessions was about the liability issues facing the city anytime it's adopting this type of regulation. And so until the city attorney is satisfied that, you know, it's board, it's governing board, it's fully understanding and aware of, of what those liabilities and what the legal impact are, you know, we will meet in closed session until we are certain that y'all know, you know, what's at stake for the city, because at the end of the day, there's no magic money tree. And so to the extent that the city gets sued, you know, for something related to, to the adoption of this legislation, that impacts the entire community. Because at the end of the day, the money to pay for a lawsuit, in the event that the city, you know, was ordered to pay, funds or, you know, attorney's fees or any of those things comes from the taxpayers. And so the very people, you know, that, that are, you know, for or against, it doesn't matter because everybody's going to get taxed the same, if, you know, if the city has that liability and is required to pay money. So that's the first thing. Moving forward, now that we have crossed that threshold, one of the things that we did do was meet with TexDOT officials to find out exactly what is it the city is required to do, not sort of kind of, here's what we think, because at the end of the day, even if we go through the same type of committee-like process that was previously being used, if it doesn't meet the required recommendation, it doesn't check off all the boxes, you go back to the drawing board. So the recommendation from the city attorney is that we change the process, and by doing so, we start out with the basic guidelines that are provided to anyone that's interested. TexDOT will give you exactly what that looks like. They give you a checklist that says, and here's your processes, and if you follow these processes and go step by step, you will have to satisfy the procedural due processes that are required, which is giving stakeholders an opportunity to be heard, making sure that things get published in the paper when it's required to be published, you know, holding those public hearings, and moving through the process. So that's very important. We have to meet those requirements. And then there's the second part, is what is compatible land use in relation to the airport regulations that the city is required to adopt? And there, there's no, the city has no leeway in what it is required to adopt. Again, TexDOT being the enforcement agency for FAA tells us exactly what is the bare minimums, and in some cases, the bare minimums may not be sufficient to meet an entity's requirements and obligations to TexDOT. So at this point, we are working with TexDOT to get exactly what the city is required to do. That way, we ensure that those things get built into the draft ordinance. And then from there, that's where things can get whittled, whittled down, expanded, removed, whatever needs to be. And so just a really brief overview, there are four major pieces that has, has to be addressed, and that's airspace protection, safety hazards, noise, and overflight issues. Breaking those down a little bit further, airport obstructions, things going high, you know, what are height regulations? And that is more or less the adoption of the rules that are currently in place for the city of Castroville by previous zoning boards or airport zoning boards, and overarching all of that, you know, by the federal regulations that say thou shalt not build up, you know, more than 200 feet in the air without getting approval from FAA. That's in place for everybody right now, whether we adopt it or don't. That's something that everyone has to comply with, you know, within certain areas of an airport. But that is airport obstruction, that's one of the items that we have to address. Wildlife, we will be required to have to address wildlife, hence the, the discussion y'all had about, you know, fencing and what can we do to, to start mitigating or attempting to mitigate wildlife as best you can, because wildlife, while we can, you know, make appropriate fencing and appropriate safeguards, and we can post notices, you know, no wildlife at this point, no whatever at this point, wildlife doesn't read, and they're not real good at observing boundaries. So that's the issue with wildlife, right? We just got to deal with it as best you can. Safety flight hazards, so we got to think about lighting. Those are, you know, lighting, smoke, thermal things, things that affect, you know, the instrumentation on airports or airplanes as they, you know, are landing and taking off. So that, there are requirements that have to be built into the ordinance as well. We must address noise, we must address overflight, and then the land use compatibility, and that is speaking to density. So what, what, what density, you know, can we allow within certain zones? And all of those zones, you know, what is, you know, the compatible zones and how it gets modeled out, you know, from the, from the runway areas, that's all based on technical reviews. So those will be, you know, the engineers and the land use planners and all of that. That's their piece and all of that. And those are policy decisions, you know, based on, you know, whatever the technical requirements are, you know, on elevation, all of those pieces. And I won't speak to that because I'm way outside of my league, you know, on those areas. I know enough to know that, you know, there are certain areas that less density closer in, and the further out, you can have more density then. And that's, you know, just basic airport planning 101. So those are the things that we will be targeting. Those are the things that TexDOT, you know, has already signaled to us, you know, the types of things that they look for. One of the reassuring pieces out of all of this is that TexDOT has worked with every agency that is under, you know, TexDOT regulations. And to date, within the state of Texas, with the exception of one, every entity that is in the, the exact same position we are in, which is, you know, trying to form a joint board and trying to form compatible regulations, has managed to accomplish it. So we are not any less smart than our compatriots within the state, and we're not any, we're not less, we're not as stupid as they are, and we're not as smart as they are. We're on par with everybody else out there. So if they can do it, we can as well. And so with that in mind, TexDOT also provided us some guidance on a couple of places where regulations may be a good fit, and places to start from rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. The places that were provided to us as perhaps our first places to look as kind of a baseline, just to get some thought processes going on how to draft compatible land uses, is the city of New Braunfels, the city of mineral wells. It just so happens that in another matter today, I was dealing with an election matter with an attorney from, for another city, and that attorney said, and oh, by the way, I'm struggling with airport and drafting airport hazard zonings. How are you guys doing right now? Like, we're in the same boat you guys are in, which is, you know, finding our path forward. What works and what doesn't work? Okay. So those are all the technical issues aside. In the ordinance itself, you know, I know that we provided some additional comments regarding the proposed draft ordinance, and the one of, one of the things that will be absolutely key in adopting the ordinance going forward is there are some things that must be checked off the boxes in order to meet the TexDOT standards. And a couple of them, the, a couple of places that are really key, we must have an appeals process, okay? So those persons who are seeking relief, you know, from the ordinance may, must have a variance in appeals process that has to be built into the ordinance. We will be required to establish a board of adjustment, and that can either be a separate board of adjustment that hears only zoning, or by policy decision by the board, once it's formed and ready to go and it's doing its thing. An existing board of adjustment, you know, would be authorized or could be authorized, you know, to hear variances from this, from the airport zoning regulations. So that's one piece.
Really quickly, on the board of adjustment, does it give instruction on where, like, who appoints those, how they're chosen?
So the-
Who they can and cannot be?
So the joint board, the joint airport hazard board, hazard board, those will make the recommendations for the appointment of the board of adjustment. And that is simply, you know, policy decision, and normally, the recommendation is that, you know, whoever's participating in the board, normally everybody has a set, a set of standards as who gets to, you know, sit on this type of board. And so for a joint board, you know, people from the city, people that live within the county, perhaps landowners that have something at stake, you know, persons with some airport knowledge probably wouldn't, wouldn't be harmful. And then you want the regular things, you know, you need to be at least 18 years old, you know, able to fully participate in such a board, you know, not a convicted felon.
But does it mandate who appoints them?
But it does not mandate. There is no, the, neither chapter 22 or 241 mandate who gets appointed to a board. So that is all policy decision.
No, I'm sorry, who, who appoints them? Who is the appointer?
The board of, the airport, the joint board.
The joint board appoints them?
The joint board is the, right. And so those participating in the joint board, they can certainly, you know, make their recommendations known to its appointees, but the joint board ultimately has the authority to appoint that board.
Gotcha.
You will, you must have an enforcement mechanism within the ordinance itself. And so that enforcement mechanism is twofold. There are those things that will be built into this ordinance that TexDOT enforces, you know, on behalf of the governmental entity. And then there are those things that the adopting governmental entities can enforce for itself via fines and penalties and that sort of thing. And the breakout of those is that those things that fall within the Part 77, you know, the height restrictions and some of those highly technical things, that where TexDOT must certify to the feds that, yes, this airport is in compliance, they will handle those portions of the enforcement. So, you know, if, if the city, you know, finds that somebody's, you know, trying to put up a cell tower and it's going up, you know, 200 and some odd feet in the air, you know, it's, city gives notice. The joint board also, if it's still in session, can give notice, you know, to that person and say, that are in violation, stop it, and then refer that to TexDOT, and then they proceed with the enforcement.
Or the county if it's in the county.
Right. So in this particular case, you know, depending on the type of regulation, it can, it can all be, you know, enforced via TexDOT. The other portion of this is that through inter-local agreements, a joint board can make a determination that, you know, and I'm just going to use the, for example here, that the city will be the one with the authority to proceed with, you know, issuing citations or, you know, issuing summons to court for any violations of other provisions that don't fall within the TexDOT realm. I'm not exactly sure, you know, what those types of violations are yet, because the ones that are more readily apparent are the ones that, that come to mind the easiest. And as we go through, you know, we will learn more about those pieces as we go. But basically, TexDOT, you know, will be the guiding force in enforcement, and if there's ever a question in it, once the adopt, the ordinance is adopted, you know, it's as simple as calling those TexDOT experts and saying, this is what I have, here's where it falls within my ordinance, and TexDOT will tell you, proceed on, that's for you to enforce, or get out of our way, that's for us to enforce. Nonconformance, and nonconforming properties. And there's no polite way to put it, so I'm just going to go ahead and, and speak frankly. This project has been kicked down the road for a little while now, and so there are currently in place, you know, issues of nonconformity. There, you know, this density likely within some certain areas, they're there, they're existing, and none of the authorized statutes that allow airport hazard regulations to be adopted authorize us to do anything other than to deal with nonconformity. And the issue with nonconformity is that, and we will drop it to the ordinance, if you're nonconforming and you're already there, you stay there and you stay in your current capacity with your current density and whatever else is going on. However, you cannot become, what is referred to as nonconformity, in other words. So, you know, if you're already there and you've got, you know, something that is, is already too dense, you don't get to add to. And so that, but that's, nonconforming is, you know, part of every type of zoning ordinance that that's in existence, because, you know, decisions that got made, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, that we can do nothing about other than to address them as, as nonconforming. And so, you know, while they, you know, there is some impact there, the bottom line is they exist, and they existed before this council, you know, formed and before this council will be the authorized body for that going forward. And then, of course, you must address an administrative agency. And I think that was a big pitfall with the last time this was attempted, and so the statute does require the appointment of an administrative agency. In other words, who's going to enforce this, and who's going to be charged with making sure that destruction happens, you know, in performance with, according to zoning regulations, you know, building, you know, requirements, and that sort of thing. And so at this point, and this is based on just the pieces of information that I have right now, because I'm not exactly sure on, you know, how far the, the hazard limits go on. But assuming for, just for state of discussion here, that the joint board is composed of either the county, or the county and the city of Castroville. So the county can say, or this board can say, you know, because of certain expertise in certain areas, we believe that the city should be the administrative agency. If the, if the city is appointed the administrative agency, then the city's employees, staff will be the ones responsible for posting of notices, you know, publication of notices, review of plans, issuing permits, you know, ensuring that all of those requirements and everything, you know, has been filed, you know- you know, has been filed, you know, with the proper authorities. And so, you know, those are the key things that will be required to go into the ordinance, and those are technical requirements of the ordinance that we have to check all those boxes on in order to pass the next box.
And that's done in the interlocal agreement between any of the authorities having jurisdiction over this area?
So, that has to be written into the ordinance, and then there's part two, which is, yes, interlocal agreements then need to be established, because, you know, if this is what is ordered by the joint board, and, you know, ideally, you know, those costs should be, you know, shared jointly for, you know, the administration of the ordinance. So those are all things that can be done, you know, on the back end. And so that's the long and short of it. And so ultimately, you know, once, you know, the actual zones are determined, you know, the regulations are determined within those zones, and again, you know, it's a policy determination from the board, you know, to make, you know, determination on, you know, what's restricted, what's prohibited, what's allowed within those zones. But ultimately, you know, I, at the end of the day, can go through and do a technical review and say, "We have met the six boxes, this is one of the six things that TechDOT says we have to have, check, check, check." I can make meet those requirements to say, you know, "This is what's required to be given at ordinance as a whole that is approved, check, 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 check." But at the end of the day, the ultimate authority on whether the city of Castroville has met its obligations to TechDOT and the FAA, is TechDOT and the FAA. However, you know, if we follow the workflow provided to us by TechDOT, and if we follow the samples, you know, provided by TechDOT, there's less room for error in going about the drafting ordinance.
So as we draft this ordinance, we had talked about putting some other, I'd call them public safeguards in place. Did you get any progress on those items?
So one of the things that we have is, we have to separate out what's required in the ordinance that establishes the authority to have and participate in the joint airport hazard zoning board versus the actual zoning regulations itself. So everything that I've spoken to is the actual airport zoning regulations itself. One of the things that the city of Castroville has to do in particular is, I would draft an ordinance so that it is future-proof. So right now, you know, we had a joint board, airport board, county recented its participation in such board, and all signals from now, you know, "Hey, we're going to be looking at reforming joint ordinance." So I have drafted an ordinance that will be coming out to council for also, you know, for review and consideration, that allows for the appointment and the authorization that have participation in the joint airport board. The safeguards that are built into it are applicable to the city of Castroville appointees, because the city of Castroville in and of itself is not the controlling authority of the joint airport board once it gets flawed. And so, will the city of Castroville appointees? City council appoints appointees, city council removes appointees, city council feels vacancies. City council, you know, provides directive on what the preferred policy is, and, you know, what the city council would like to see, and, you know, have those guidelines and standards in place for its appointees. The ordinance will also authorize the negotiation of interlocal agreements, with such agreements not being approved and adopted, you know, for use until such time as the governing bodies of each board, you know, give their approval of such agreements. Those are the highlights of the ordinance.
We had also talked about, like, a specified approval process, so that basically, the attorneys would be the final, before an ordinance could be approved, the attorneys would have, basically, the ability to approve or deny based on legality, based on what we can actually do?
Yes, sir. And so I think with turning this process around, that process on the back end, I think will be a lot streamlined, because what we started with is, let's make sausage and do all of this, and then get it over there, and then, you know, once we started giving our feedback, we kind of threw the board into a little bit of turmoil, because, like, we haven't heard this before, it's like, "I'll get in my student to come to your meetings to give you guidance." And I think we're switching the process around this, which is, starting from the premise of legality first, and then moving to policy decisions, we will be able to streamline that legal review at the back end. Because again, at the end of the day, when we can check off and say, "Check, check, 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 check," ultimately, TechDOT, you know, is the one that, you know, either gives us the go-ahead, proceed on, adoption, or may, you know, you still have, you know, to address, you know, whatever it is they need.
Okay. And I think the other thing that we need to make in then is our communication procedure in, it's got to be in the ordinance. If something happens, there's certain amount of lead time, there's this kind of notification, and how we go about doing that. I think we need to come to an agreement on that as well. And it needs, I really believe that it needs to be in the ordinance, so that people know what to expect. If there's something, what happened, so, I've made sausage before, and I've thrown away batches because they really stink, and you can't be afraid to do that. And so I want to make sure that we have something that lets people know, "Hey, this is, this is what you can expect." Somebody told me that stress is when what you expect to happen, what actually happens are different. So I want to make sure that they understand, once we get to this point, this is our lead time, this is the notification, this is how we're going to handle it. Is that something that we can put into the ordinance then?
So there are portions of that that I think, yes, probably, you know, would be good to have, you know, within the ordinance, you know. However, beyond, you know, a recitation of rules required by TechDOT, I don't know that we need much more than that, because the statute tells us, you know, this is very minimum of what you have to do, and, you know, our policy, you know, as the city's council is, more notice is always better, because one public area does appear there, in my opinion, for something that is, you know, is as big and far-reaching as these regulations have the potential to be. You know, we absolutely need that the stakeholders involved, and people mostly that will be impacted more so than others need to know and be able to see, you know, what's the draft look like, what is this? And I think one of the things that we do need to just remember is that overall, this council has, as a general policy, says, what do we need to comply with the law, and what makes good sense, but as a general overarching policy, at least in the time that I've been serving on, is, we don't want to be overreaching with our regulations. We want to provide good, you know, guiding regulations for the city and to manage its growth, but we don't want to get to where, you know, where Michael managing property is, because at the end of the day, if we're getting that far, the city just needs to start stock calls and funds and buying up property, because that's the only way you can guarantee how to control it.
Does anybody have any questions?
Hi. Two things. In the ordinance for the joint zoning board and everything, is there training, or do we know if there's training out there from TechDOT slash the FAA that these board members can attend? And if so, can we make that a requirement in the joint ordinance board? That way, everybody's on the same page of what TechDOT requires and stuff like that.
That is certainly possible.
Okay.
And it's probably a really...
And then, second, going back to the administrative agency, say, if the city of Castroville is named the, you know, administrative agency, is there training to send our staff to? That way, they're following within the rules and everything, and everybody on the shame sheet of music and stuff for permits and what have you regarding the airport.
What, I'm just trying.
Well, anybody? Just on forward thinking.
Right. So this is beyond the scope of this conversation?
Yeah. But I'm just throwing it out there, because the more people are trained, the more knowledge they have, the better it should work out for people and the agencies. So that's what I'm looking at.
So what I think that Cynthia's telling us is that they're going to come up with the basic, these are the legal parameters, and if there's anything beyond that, then they would go through and look at preferences, look at other things in open session with the involvement of people. So we're just going to get to the point where they have, this is what you can do, and this is what you can't do.
Okay. I was just thinking of the training for the board, especially with it being county, other people besides the city of Castroville.
And it's always right, because your board will frequently have members that have expertise that it's a good idea to have, you know, to help them to share that knowledge with others.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. I appreciate the update. Just for everybody, please, again, our contact information is on the website. I think that most of you have access to our numbers, our email addresses. We will continue to keep you informed about what's going on, keep you involved with the process, and please don't hesitate to reach out if you have questions, concerns, you want to dig into it a little bit further, any of these items, they're on the table. All right. Thank you. Next item is presentation on final water and wastewater master plan from Respec.
If it's okay, can I stand? Can we just mark the phone so that I, it's a little hard to see the screen? Let me make sure this works. We had some colored lines a second ago.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Is it on on that stuff?
It is off.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of odd colors. Okay, I'm Daryl Spelman with Respec. We have been supporting the city on the technical issues. Are you getting the lines on the other side, too?
Yeah, well, I can try and do this real quick.
There you go.
Well, no, hold on.
And as we prepare for the presentation, as we prepare for the presentation, can we have any side conversations go into the out hall? Larry? Hey, Arnie, will you tap Larry on the shoulder real quick? Thank you. So if you guys want to have any side conversations as we start getting into this, please feel free to step out and, just so that we can hear it. Thanks.
All right, give me one second.
Fasenajic. I was going to get the gavel, but I think you hit me back with a bigger gavel.
Yeah.
Go up to your display settings at the very top, right there, drop it down, swap presenter.
This is all great out.
You broke it.
Okay. Can you argue me on this microphone?
Yep.
Okay, I'm Daryl Spelman with Respec. We've been supporting the city on water and wastewater improvements as their related developments coming to town, and as part of that, we were asked to provide a master plan for the water and wastewater system for the city. We delivered that report a few weeks ago, and Scott asked us to come to give a presentation on the city council. So our quick agenda on this presentation is our methodologies for developing the report, proposed water upgrades for the existing conditions, proposed conditions, and ultimate conditions, as the city develops, 40, 50 years down the road, and that's for both the water and the wastewater system. And then we're going to be completing with some recommendations. So our methodologies for this report were to first gather all the information that we could on the city's system, maps, adult records, any previous reports that were done, and then to take those, take all that information and to put it into a water model and a wastewater model. The city had already gotten a water model developed a few years back with a previous engineering firm. We were able to get that, make some updates to it, review some of their assumptions, and then utilize that. The wastewater model was developed from scratch based on all the records that we can gather on the city. So then we looked at the existing conditions, and when we talk about existing conditions in this report, we talked about including the Phase 1 of Alstation Oaks, because we're basically completing all the required, all the water and wastewater infrastructure that was needed to get that system online. So that's what we consider our existing conditions. And then we talked about proposed conditions, which includes five developers who have come to the table recently to talk about more projects with the city, and the addition of roughly 5,000 OUEs to the city. The city currently roughly has about 1,400 OUEs in the system. And we remember from previous presentations that an OUE is roughly the equivalent of one single-family house, but we use that to do things like size pumps and pipes, and use that as an equivalency for, you know, commercial developments. You don't, you know, necessarily fit the mold of a single-family house. And then we looked at ultimate conditions, because, you know, the assumption is, is that as the city progresses 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road, it's going to continue to expand to where it's probably going to put up against city of San Antonio, put up against Yancey Water System, East McDeener Water System. And so what is that going to look like 40, or what could it look like 40 or 50 years ago, years down the road? We don't know for sure. It's kind of, this is our best guess at this point in time, and so nobody's really got a crystal ball on those. So what upgrades are we looking for in the water system? Well, in the existing water system, you've got roughly a little over 1,400 acres in your service area. That 22 number, I mentioned 1,400 a few minutes ago for the report, it's 2200 because that includes what's coming online with Alstation Oaks, Bank of Martin. And then there was also somewhere between 50 and 100 OUEs that were included for city use to take care of things like infill development or lowlands, included developments, maybe some other redevelopment projects within the city. The water system's got approximately 18 miles of water main ranging in size from 2 to 60 inches. But those improvements in Alstation Oaks, Medina Valley water system, the city's going to have a total of almost 900,000 gallons of storage and a pumping capacity of 1,900 gallons per day. Those improvements are listed below at the bottom of that slide. For the proposed conditions, that includes those five developments, we're looking at roughly 5,000 additional OUEs. Service area will increase to almost 14,000 acres and 7,200 OUEs. System looking at 29 miles of water main and ranging in size from 2 to 24 inches. So you can see a pretty significant jump there, going from 2,000, a little over 2,000 to 7,000. That's almost tripled in size of the city. Water plant improvements would need to get you, you'd need to have approximately 2.4 million gallons of storage and a production capacity of 6.9 million gallons per day. So what that means is that we're looking at a lot of new water rings, approximately 1.5 million gallons of additional storage, and a new well site that we're looking at in the January 2022 area right now for that. So ultimate conditions, this is if you went all the way to...
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
In the package, Scott, that you sent out, there's also a yellow highlight.
Yeah, that was deleted. We made some minor updates in the presentation. We can, Scott should have a copy.
Same with the system. You go up there at the previous one, it said 16. On here, it said 36.
Yeah.
Up there, it says 24, and this says, and this says 36.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we did update those numbers in there.
Okay.
We sent that out late on Friday, I guess, at multiple times.
A little bit late on Friday.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So yours is updating.
Yeah, we got this today.
Yes, sir. So ultimately, that's if you're button up against the Bay County city of San Antonio. Now, keep in mind, this does extend outside of the current CCN, so that would require some additional work with public utility commissions to extend your CCN out there, assuming too that you're extending to the minutes along the way. You know, buttoning up against Yancey and East Medina and their water systems as well. So you're looking at roughly 28,000 acres of service area and 42,600 OUEs, and that would be pretty far down the road.
That's a very far, very lonely end of the feature.
Yes. But you can see, we've, the line's there, we've stretched in proposed water mains. Those could change based on which developments, when they come in, you know, what they look at, the density, things, those kinds of things. We made a lot of big general assumptions with this on, you know, densities that could all change as developers came to the table and what they had to offer. So, yeah, and so for your production capacity, you need approximately... approximately almost nine million gallons of storage and thirty-six point eight million gallons per day of water production. So wastewater upgrades, service area, you may notice this numbers are a little bit lower than the water. And that's because there are certain areas of town where people aren't separate systems, and they have water service, but you know, it's sewer service. So those numbers are a little bit lower for the existing conditions. But there's approximately twenty-six miles of sewer main ranging in size from eight to twenty-four inches. Twenty-four inches out there on Highway ninety that we just extended for Alstation Oaks. You have a plant, current plant capacity of point nine million gallons per day. This, this slide says point four million gallons per day. That would include phase one of Alstation Oaks. Right now, you're probably running about point two to point three. So Alstation Oaks would bump that up a little bit. So for proposed conditions with these other developments coming online, that service area would increase to thirteen thousand eight hundred acres, roughly seven thousand OUEs, twenty-eight miles of sewer main ranging in size from eight to twenty-four inch. And your capacity at your wastewater plant would, would go to, would be needing to be one point two million gallons per day. So the improvements, let me spend a little bit of time talking about those real quick. Obviously, you'd need some new sewer mains during, through those. But we are looking at some upgrades to improve the efficiency of the water, the sewer plant. Castroville's like a lot of other towns, you see a diurnal flow where some parts of the day it's, it's high, some parts of the day it's low. If you can equalize that over time, make it a steady flow throughout the day, you can pick up some efficiency in your plant. And we started looking into that already. We think by installation of a flow equalization basin at the plant, you could get a little extra capacity out of it. The other items we're looking at are some improvements to the lift station, excuse me, the lift station at the regional park. Doesn't have a lot of capacity in it, which means the, the capacity, the capacity comes in the form of filling the sewer main that feeds it. We've done some investigation of that. Generally speaking, the pipe, there's some fair condition, but there are a couple load spots. So we're proposing some improvements to that sewer main as well to make it run a little bit better, advancing capacity of the lift station.
And that's the, the force main that feeds the lift station?
The force main is adequately sized. There is a gravity main that feeds it, and the lift station, for whatever reason, doesn't have any capacity to load where the pipe comes in. So there's really no effective storage in the lift station itself. So the pipe serves as your storage for the lift station, which is really not ideal because when the pipe runs full like that, that means the water moves slowly and settles solid. So if we can get some, you know, get the lift station deeper so we have some storage capacity as a, as a pipe, as a flow entrance to the pipe, then, then that pipe actually fits up to capacity. We're also proposing adding a third pump to the east side lift station, mainly for redundancy and system reliance issue. So for ultimate conditions on the sewer system, we're looking at twenty-four eight, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred acres and forty-five thousand OUEs, forty-four miles of sewer main ranging in size from eight to thirty inch, and wastewater treatment capacity of eight point two million gallons. So that would be, we're probably not gonna do much more additional work at the plant. You've got, add all your money, we'll start looking at a site for that plant somewhere in the mix, twenty-four, so we're...
Now, you've got it, and I, I just wanna call this one out. You've got it, the second treatment plant over by the airport, but that would have to be a fully enclosed. We couldn't have the open storage because of the bird attractors, correct?
Um, there are some things you can do to mitigate that. I'm not an expert on building those.
Okay.
To, to treat those issues, but, yeah, that would happen, we definitely have to give consideration.
Yeah, I think that we need to look at...
Any kind of nuisance attractors that would cause problems with the airport. There's a, there's a lot to unpack if you wanted to...
We'll have regulations to keep us from doing that.
Technical issues are minor compared to a lot of...
Oh yeah. No, I just, I wanna make sure that we're looking at, following our own regulations and, and just anticipating that.
Yeah. That, that makes sense from a hydraulic standpoint, because that's kind of a load spot in the sewer. But there's other alternatives.
Twenty years from now.
Yeah.
You know, if we wanted to spend forty million dollars, we could recapture that and burn it and turn it into electricity.
We do show a couple of proposed lift stations in town too, but again, those are a lot like any other improvements. Those would depend on the type of development, grits, where they're located. You know, a big thing with sewer is, is most efficient for, to flow by gravity downhill. So, but sometimes you can't do that, you gotta... Kind of like what you're doing right now in your position. So, real quickly, the recommendations that came out of the master plan, the initiation, the initiation of well and water source project, where we circumdual work, we've certainly spotted a lot of these, looking at some sites over on the January Ranch project. Something that was brought up at the agenda was the identification of the planned traffic thoroughfares. Originally bring that up is because it's really the run, a lot of that infrastructure, all those same byways. And then develop a list of potential locations for other elevated water shortage. These three individuals, the improvements to the original lift station, the rehabilitation of the sewer main, and the flow equalization, those are kind of already in progress. We're doing some planning and engineering work on those as well. And then the last two or a couple of really big picture items, develop a list of potential locations for future wastewater create plants, because that's probably gonna be a really long-term process to get that done. And then continued engagement with development teams for acquisition of water rights and real estate for future future. Basically, what that means is if you've got a developer coming to town, it's got a big project, make sure you bring a lot of cars with it, because those are kind of like real estate, they're really expensive in the world and you get... So with that, I'd like to conclude and leave that as a stop.
Any questions for Daryl?
Do we need to get him engaged, based on the conversations that we had with Westwood on the northern route?
We've, we've supplied him that information. If you looked at, I was gonna mention earlier, when you look at the water plan, the future, kind of where those lines are, that's not arbitrary. Some of that's based on our own thoroughfare planning, so that's something that they're already, we're already doing.
We'll start from the set.
There's no discussion in the earlier charts about water rights, required acre feet. Is that something that's, couldn't be put into this kind of a projected report where you show how much, how much water rights you're gonna need at each phase?
We did spend a lot of time on that. Maybe we stayed with the regulatory side, and regulatory doesn't really look at how many acre feet you need for an OUE. We could probably run that exercise and get something back to Scott.
Seemed like it would be a very important thing to know.
I know that's something, yeah.
And that's something that we need to get figured out. We've talked about this a bit.
Our best estimate right now is that we're requiring too much. That what we're, what we require them to deliver per lot is, is considerably more than we absolutely need. So that's the good news, is that right now, based on our prior policies, our water rights and, and our, and current enforcement of those policies, our water rights are, are more than where they need to be. But I think it's something we probably need to investigate because it would be good to have that information to provide you all as policymakers and decide, well, do you wanna leave where it's at, or do we wanna make some adjustments?
The reason I think it's important is, just, we just used Alstation Oaks as an example. We have a plan, we're following the plan, but the water rights is now an issue for you and the city council to deal with, and may end up having a change. If we knew what the requirement was and what we owned, then we would be in a better position to have that discussion. That's what I'm concerned about.
To be clear, he's talking about something completely different, and that is the policy, the, looking at water as a city asset. And that is something that we need to...
But it belongs, I, I agree with you. That, that's, that's an aspect of this report. This was just a summary. The actual report is how many pages, Daryl?
It's a couple hundred.
Couple hundred pages long, so we'll deliver that full report to you. But something that needs, probably, probably need to ask Respec to do, which Daryl's offered to do, is give us some guidance on what, what's the actual need for, for water rights? Where do, and, and in what stages? If we're, because that's something that the mayor and I have spent some time looking at as well. If we're in a stage four drought, how does that impact us, right? In, in the various stages. So, right now, we're, we're in a very good place, but we need to ensure that we continue to be well-prepared for, for those types of issues.
Especially as we go into the summer, already in drought restrictions.
Right.
And the only other comment that I wanted to make was, from my reading of your report, the promise that we made to the people of Castroville when we approved the development agreement for Alstation Oaks, we said that citizens who live here now would not pay for that new infrastructure. It looks like we're keeping that promise.
Right.
So, I mean, I feel real good about that.
It's online.
Yeah, I just, I agree. We need to know where those thresholds are.
That's true.
I just, I really need to thank you guys, because I, I appreciate the dedication, the diligence. You are so incredibly methodical about this, and I just, I really appreciate that. Thank you for this. This is good, high level.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl.
I'm just trying to guide you down.
Yeah, thanks.
We were here before we were in San Antonio.
Thank you for coming down here.
I noticed you brought your bodyguards. That's good.
Alright, next item is discussion and appropriate action on a petition from Highway ninety Castroville Partners Limited. Oh, sorry, the next one after this. For voluntary annexation of property ID R eight seven seven three three Walmart store, number four one zero two dash zero zero block one, also known as Tondre Parkway, and authorizing city staff to start the annexation process. And for this, we have Scott Dixon.
Yeah, so tonight, we are accepting the petition, but there is some debate. We've been talking to our city attorney and staff about whether annexation is really necessary. And so we're gonna, we recommend going in and accepting the petition, but hopefully by the next meeting, by the March twenty-eighth meeting, we'll determine whether or not annexation is really necessary. Either way, we do need to go through an acceptance process for Tondre Parkway. I don't believe, we can't find any record that it was ever officially accepted by the city, which means it needs to be inspected, ensure that it meets our standards. Certainly, it was inspected during construction, right? But if it wasn't accepted at the time, if it was being built to a standard, being inspected, inspected at the time, that's great. But when we go to accept it, we wanna ensure that we're accepting, you know, the best road possible, I believe. So, that would still be the process either way, and that may be all that's required. So we will try to determine that for you and get, let you know by the twenty-eighth. But tonight, the action would simply be to accept the petition.
It's a, it's a good thing, 'cause I checked the appraisal district and we're already collecting tax on it.
Yeah.
Yes, it's in there.
We're aware.
I'll get it back.
And grateful for the seven dollars and eighteen cents.
Yeah, something like that here.
Whatever it is, twelve bucks.
Two dollars and forty-three cents.
Alright, do I have a, a motion on this?
I'll move that we accept the application for annexation by Castroville Partner, Highway ninety Castroville Partners Limited for the annexation of Tondre Parkway.
Second.
I second it.
Second it again.
Alright, so I have a, Councilman Kerry made a motion. Councilman Dyer seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, discussion and appropriate action on authorizing the city administrator to negotiate a contract for the sale of effluent to the Bane Farm, the Bohemi Farm.
Burma.
Burma.
What are y'all, what are y'all doing?
If you ask Google, how do you say Bane, it comes back Burma.
I was like, 'cause I've learned Bane. And that's, if you're telling me it's pronounced differently, I'm gonna be very frustrated.
It's a little harder than it's Burma. Something like that.
We have reached the end of our contractual period with the Bane family. Ten, roughly ten years ago, the city was facing some TCQ violations for ponding and other issues related that, related to that. And I believe we sought the, the most economic resolution, and that involved a, a contract with the Banes to, to accept effluent from the city, which they've done for about ten years. We have not, at, at this stage, we, we have the ability to now put our effluent into an outfall that's close to the river, so it goes into a stream, which then goes into the river. We have to meet certain criteria by TCQ to be able to do that. We are meeting those criteria now. We do have, we're not, there are some issues that need to be fixed. We've got a drainage issue in the canal where we dump to that needs to be repaired, so that we don't end up, so it stays in the stream and makes its way to the river, basically. But that's a minor repair that needs to be done. We're working with K-Freeze to give us a design and, and cost estimate, and then we'll, we'll get that underway. The issue right now is, we're basically acting under a contract. The Banes expressed interest in purchasing the effluent from us. They've made an initial offer. There are cer- certain contractual obligations that the city had to meet during that ten-year period. Were you able to get an answer earlier today? No? Okay. So one of the answers that I'm seeking is, in the original contract, there's some language in there that's a little bit confusing. At the time, and I, Brad, I don't know all your family. Is there anybody else here besides yourself?
No, just me.
Okay, I know Brad.
I can address some of those.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll be up to the council. But, so one of the things that Mr. Bane made aware, made me aware of was, in the contract, it states that the city will repay his investment in a pivot system of sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars. Brad claimed that that had not been paid. We've done our due diligence to determine whether it had been paid. I can find no evidence of that either. I don't know why the city would not have paid it ten years ago, except that in the link, in the contract, it also states that if the city expends more than two hundred thousand dollars on the piping and other things required, then it, then its financial obligation to the Banes would end. And we spent, in, in the minutes that Mrs. Howe was able to identify, we spent about two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in piping and to peerless and to other groups. So those minutes, yeah, you should have a copy of that, of what those added up to. So that's, right now, my, my best guess is that potentially could be why the, why that he was not reimbursed, but I don't know. We'll look into that and find that out. What staff is seeking this evening is permission from council to begin those negotiations, contract negotiations with the Banes, to receive the effluent. We will need some guidance on how much to sell the effluent for. The offers were made of thirty dollars per acre foot. We believe this is, although, you know, they haven't been paying for it in, in the years past, we believe this is far below what market value would be. Potable water is selling for a hundred and twenty dollars a square, or an acre foot around here. But then when you look at actual, you know, cit- other cities that are doing this, some of them are considerably higher than that, even for effluent. So we're not recommending going as high as a hundred and twenty dollars, but we think it should be something between that thirty and a hundred and twenty dollar range. And in my mind, it's more like the seventy-five to eighty-five dollar range for, for the, an acre foot of water. That's three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons, more or less. I believe that's right. Some cities charge it by, by per thou. They use their own bulk water, water fee calculations to kind of determine where that rate should be. Again, I think that's something for you all to consider. When we bring back the contract, it'll be with a price, and then you'll get to decide what, whether that price is, is appropriate. The other concern that I have is that we have a leak in our, in the water pipe that's going to the farm. That's kind of what got this whole issue started. We were unable to repair the leak. The leak was twenty-six thousand dollars. I asked my staff, wait a minute, what is this for? They said, well, it's for sending water to the farmer. And I said, well, okay, but that contract's ending, right? Yes, it's ending. Well, then do we wanna spend twenty-six thousand dollars to repair, you know, a pipe that only goes one direction and doesn't serve, you know, the broader interests? And if we have, if we have this option with TCQ to dump into the river, shouldn't we be doing that instead? So that's things that we discussed. In my opinion, my recommendation would be that if we're to continue this, this sending water to the farmer, that that would, at a minimum, the, the pipe would be paid for and repaired by the Banes. And then we offer a credit for whatever that amount worked out to be, the actual cost of the repair, with credit against whatever price that we arrange to, to sell the water for. The other request that was made was that the water be available, basically, they get, they get primary right, especially during summer and other, you know, peak watering times. I would not recommend that we, we grant that, simply because there's other needs in the city, especially, you know, watering the regional park. There may be other investments that will allow us to, to water the park more, you know, to create a holding state, a holding tank of our own, but that's down the road kind of solutions. but that's down-the-road kind of solutions. So, I would be careful about granting kind of a, a primary position on the water. I think we would just say, "We'll get it as we can give it to you, and this is the rate we'll pay, and we'll meter it, you know, this is the rate we'll charge, and we'll meter that." But anyway, that, those are the staff's recommendations, as we've discussed through it. There's, like I said, several unknowns. Tonight, all I'm really seeking is permission to start the contractual discussion. That, again, we'll have to come back to council for approval, if we can go over the terms that have been negotiated when it comes back.
I think you're really, from my experience, you've been very pragmatic with these kind of negotiations, but I would like to hear from Bradford on kind of the history of this, the, the, the origin and kind of where we are right now. Do you mind stepping up to the podium and?
Bradford Bane, I live at 1230 County Road 477 Castroville. We've had the contract with the city for about 40 years. We, being my family, my grandfather, Ward Bane, and then my dad and my uncle, Gail and Glennford, and now it's my cousin Jared and myself. And it used to be, in the contracts, I actually organized them all in a nice folder, and I was lucky enough to go into my office and pick it up off the shelf, so I have, you know, I'm kind of proud of myself on my organization skills, which I usually lacking, but...
You say 40 years?
Yeah, 40 years.
I should've, I should've clarified that, 'cause it's only, this last, I guess TCQ required us to go from five to 10 on this last contract, but they've been taking water for us from a lot, for a lot longer. I, I should've said...
And it was used to, referred to as disposal, and of course, everyone kind of laughed at us because we irrigate with poop water from the city Castroville. Hasn't had much thought of that in over the years. Cleaning out those nozzles, you know, with a toothpick and they're putting it back down to the next one, etc. But, you know, to address some of the things that Scott was talking about, it was always an issue. My grandpa didn't want to invest any money in the, in the systems and stuff, and he had some very Navajo-style watering setup up there to try to do something with it. And as the years went on, and I took an interest in being the farmer and started renting from my father, I, I invested in this pivot that we're talking about. And I have a bunch of emails back and forth to the city attorney, specifically on that language where it says the $200,000, and, and I asked him specifically to tell me, "Does this mean that if the improvements cost over $200,000, are you not gonna pay me back for that pivot that I bought before we negotiated this contract?" And he said, "No, you're gonna get your money, and if it's over $200,000, that includes what we need to pay to you." And I have copies of all those.
Will you remind me the name of the attorney, 'cause you told me in a text...
Yes, Fisher.
He's with your firm.
Ross Fisher.
Right?
Yes.
And so, well, at that time, the city was thinking about putting it into the river, but the sewer treatment plant wasn't built to the specs where it could clean it clean enough to put it into the river. And then I kind of partnered with a guy named Bill Bunch that was with the organization that was like Save the Texas Rivers, and he was an attorney, and he helped me to negotiate, so that I had a little bit more expertise on my side. And they were interested in the water to continue to go to the farm instead of to go into the river, and so that's why we made a good partner on that deal. But I had, I had Bill Bunch, I said, "Hey, can you please clarify that language in the contract, because it doesn't make sense to me. It sounds like if the costs are more than $200,000, then they, they only have to pay, you know, up to that and don't have to reimburse me." But, you know, he specifically said, the $200,000 deal was basically, if it cost under $200,000, they were gonna pay us a cash bonus in between that amount and there. See, what they wanted us to do, they wanted me to get all these numbers together ahead of time and give it to the city, which I did, and I have a couple of letters from Paul Hoffman back at that time, going back and forth, communicating with him on what the proposed costs were gonna be. Of course, my proposed costs compared to the city's proposed costs, you know, obviously are different.
Yeah, we, we...
Like, when you talk about $26,000 to repair a leak, you know, I would go in there with me and my hand and some shovels, and we could fix it for 500 bucks, kind of thing. And I'm willing to do that.
Right, right.
And also, I would think, if there's a bunch of utilities above this pipe that's leaking, you know, and, and the ponds are no longer gonna be used, why, you know, why not put the pipe in another place and connect it to the existing pipe? Plus, I'd also like to mention that when there's trouble and a person has a, a meter, you know, and there's a break, the city takes care from the meter to their direction, and the landowner takes care of, from the meter to their house.
Yes.
And of course, this is on your property, not on my property.
Yeah, so we're negotiating in real time, I see.
Yeah, just, just some things I wanted to get off my chest while I was listening to what you were saying.
You're good, you're good. Would you, would you please share those emails and KKKs with, with me and...
Yes, I'd be happy to.
All four of them.
Yeah, that was, that was some specific stuff, 'cause I thought, "That looks sneaky. I don't know what that means." And so, I thought, "Well, if I got the attorney himself to actually put it in writing, I would be able to do, like in those fancy movies where I slap that paper on the desk and say, 'There you go, that's what it is.'" And then I also made an invoice for y'all for that amount, so that...
You haven't written.
Oh, there you go.
And it says payable today, so...
Great.
But...
How much, how much this piece of paper cost you?
Yeah. Well, I took it from the city of San Antonio while I was there. No, just kidding. That actually came out of my own desk. So, also to address some of that stuff about the, needing water when it's dry and during the summertime. See, as a farmer, you need the water when it's dry and during the summertime. And with our experience over the 40 years that we've had this, the city doesn't send it when it's dry and during the summertime. They send it when it's wet, because those ponds actually took a lot of water off of those hills, and that's mostly what filled up those ponds. And so, it needed to get gone, so it didn't overflow and flow into the river. And so, consistently, over the 40 years, we had water when we didn't need it, and when we needed it, we didn't get it. So, that was why I put that in my email to you, that I, I, I would like to irrigate grass when I can, and when it's lucrative is when it's dry, 'cause you can irrigate grass, you can bale hay, and you can sell hay when there's no hay available. And then as far as like water rights and stuff go, which was part of the, the presentation, I don't have any Edwards Water Rights. We never drilled an irrigation well, so I irrigate either with the effluent water from the city Castroville or the water that's in Medina Lake, which there's not enough in it this year to actually water.
Do you buy from BMA?
So, I buy from BMA, and what I pay them is $30 an acre foot, and that's where I came up with that figure, just to start with. Now...
That's one of the questions we had prior to this meeting that I wasn't able to answer, so...
Yeah, that, and that, you know, that was just my starting point. I'd be happy to pay more, which I probably shouldn't say, but yes, I would. And, and actually, back 10 years ago, I have notes from when I called all around to all the cities that, and asked them what they do with their effluent water. And I talked to, Saws, of course, was the biggest one, and they, at that time, were selling some of their water to golf courses and light industry for cooling towers for $320 an acre foot, which I knew that I couldn't compete with. But the storage was always the issue, but the way Saws gets around it is they have some spots that have 40-inch mains, and when you have miles and miles of that big of a pipe, you have a lot of storage just in the main itself, which I thought was interesting. They don't lose anything to evaporation, et cetera. In the future, I'd like to keep my part of what I inherit from my parents in my family and do some kind of a conservation easement, so that it doesn't turn into a subdivision, and I'd like to continue to irrigate.
I would love to make a conservation easement as part of this negotiation. That's great.
Yeah, but, yeah, sure, that's not exactly on the table, 'cause I haven't inherited it yet. But what I'd like to do, because if I could explain this, the reason why people sell their land is because there's not many people farming their land anymore. When we initially moved out here in 1844, we tried to farm, and we all failed at it because it did not rain. And so, we all became ranchers, cowboys, and we shipped stuff back and forth from Indianola to, to San Antonio, et cetera. So, what I found is that, one, you gotta have a real job, which my real job is a farmer in San Antonio, and that pays the bills and makes it to where the bank will give me enough rope to hang myself to go buy equipment. So, then I go buy equipment. Some of that equipment I buy is irrigation stuffs, 'cause I found, if you can irrigate, you can make a consistent crop, and then you actually can make money off of your farm, and then it's less of a incentive for you to go, yeah, it's less, well, it makes it to where maybe you can afford to hang on to your family farm. 'Cause if your family farm isn't doing anything for you, and you can make millions, millions of dollars selling them for $30,000 an acre, I guess a lot of folks in my position would do so.
And what, you know, we're on video, Kenny might be listening to you. You might want to mention that she also helps you with that, your job.
My lovely wife is a farm assistant. She, she says, she pronounces it pharmacist, but I say farm assistant. For my farm.
One question for you, Brad.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this has been nagging me, since I found out that we may owe you $61,400.
Yes, patience. I'll answer your question.
I've been here two years. How come this is the first time I'm hearing this?
Well, I wanted to wait until the contract was finished, because I thought, "Well, surely, at some point during that contract, they're gonna pay me that money."
Do you have, you mentioned there's some back and forth with the attorneys about that, that would be paid. Do you have any back and forth about their request?
Well, unfortunately, my conversation...
Was a similar invoice delivered then?
I should've. I, I didn't think of that until on my way over here, when I typed that out. But now you have it, so that kind of starts the clock. But as far as like a, a, what is it, you know, the term being expired, you know, 'cause it was so long ago, I don't think that exists here.
You see Phil a lot more regularly than you see me.
Yeah.
Phil, how many times has he brought up that we owe him money?
Oh, I've brought it up lots of times. He says, "Oh, the language is..." It, it seems to me, in the language there, that it's not...
Actually, I didn't get involved in this conversation. Tell them what you're, tell them what you told me, what the attorney told you.
Okay, so what I did was, after all those improvements were made, my uncle got this pivot, that pipeline was installed, and those pumps were installed, so that we could actually do, try to do something with the effluent. I called the attorney, and I said, "Hey, there's that one item on there about you reimbursed me for the pivot that I put in." And he says, "Yeah, if you want to get that money," he said, "you're gonna have to sue us to get it."
Wow, that was, that was on an attorney, right?
I think it was the attorney. I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on whether it was, I think it was the attorney, because when I went back through my notes, I had, in, when I, first I went through my phone, and so I have, you know, little notations next to people in my phone, like, "Never talk to this asshole ever again." And so, I went through there, and I put asshole and city, and I tried to find, but there wasn't, but, there wasn't, but that one guy, Kate, you know, in there.
The gentleman you mentioned before, I want to get to say his name. Was it a plea of the city that's no longer with the city?
Yeah, I understand. A lot of the folks that we're talking about are no longer with the city. So, what I thought was, after he said that, I thought, "I am not gonna sue the city for something that's in a contract that we both signed, because if you'll allow me, my uncle would say, 'That contract isn't worth wiping your butt with, you know.'" It's, and, and it's true, as far as that goes, in my mind, that you look at it and you say, "Well, we put this in there, city signed it, I signed it, daddy signed it, uncle signed it, and then it didn't come to fruition." And then when he said, "Well, you're gonna have to sue us to get it," I thought, "Well, I'm not gonna sue the city for that. I'll just wait until some decent people come along that I can talk to, and they'll see the wrongs and right the wrongs."
A decade later.
A decade later, patience.
Mayor Lee was, or former Mayor Bob Lee was the mayor at the time, right? Did you have any direct interaction with him?
No, no, I didn't have any direct interaction. It was, it was Paul, Paul and...
Yeah, just send me what you got, and then I'll go through that, and we'll talk to our current attorney and see what we can get figured out.
So, does she have the check? Who has the checkbook? I'm confused.
So, I think that the, the recommended motion is to authorize the city administrator to negotiate a contract for the sale of effluent to the Bane Farm.
Make a motion and red.
I'll second it.
Great. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to discuss it a little bit.
Yes, please.
I'm not in favor of rushing to a new contract. First of all, I'd like to state, the city is beholden to the Bane family, 'cause you've helped us for many years. We need to all acknowledge that.
Thanks.
You gave us a solution when there was no other solution, and I think we're very grateful for that. But things change with time, and I, I think we need to do some research, and we need to find the facts, and we need to bring the facts forward. I cannot believe that somewhere in our history, that there isn't some set of documents about this subject that will help us to clarify some of the missing information.
What we've been able to uncover is what we've given you. So, we, we have the contract. We have the minutes from the meetings that took place at the time the contract was approved. We have some of those items. We went back and looked through our own financial records to see if we could identify checks that may have been cut to the Bane family. We looked at every member of the family, looked at every which way we could. We could find no evidence of, again, we can support the claim that he wasn't paid, 'cause we can find no evidence of, of a payment being made. But unfortunately, I think that's, I think we've done about as much as we can do, other than going through, you know, I need to talk to Mayor Bob Lee and...
What about the previous contracts? What about the previous 30 years?
I have contracts.
We have contracts. We need to go through all of them. I think we need to, just do due diligence. I'm not saying make this into a big project, but I think we need to do due diligence to get the facts as best we can, and then once the city attorneys say to us, "These are all the facts we're gonna have to work with," then we decide, you know, what are we gonna do? What goodwill are we gonna show? I mean, everybody's got their position, but I, I don't want to be in a rush this week to pen a new contract when we don't know a lot of this information. Plus, there's other things I'm concerned about, like, for example, that water doesn't go up that hill unless an electric pump pumps it.
That's correct.
And that electric pump costs a lot of money to run.
That's correct.
And all those costs need to be considered if we're gonna start selling a product, not just delivering water. And so, I, I would like to say, "Yeah, let's proceed, let's, let's be diligent, but let's not get in a rush." I mean, the Banes aren't gonna go anywhere. We're not going anywhere, and we all know that, that we can find a solution if we just work at it.
I don't think it's been stated clearly, but our intent is to continue to send water for at least the next month, so, I mean, we have no intention of stopping that.
And, and the repair to the pipe, that, we ought to proceed with that. We ought to figure out a way to...
That's a separate issue.
How we're gonna do that is part of the contract.
Yeah.
And so, we can get the water up there.
It's still going up there.
And we need to get it up there when you need it.
Oh, I'd appreciate that.
Not when it's...
Well, I don't want to pay for any water that goes into the river, and, and my proposal would be, obviously, when it's raining and it's wet, to send it into the river. I don't need to irrigate when it's raining wet. Mother Nature and God help me out with that part.
We certainly want to meet your contract requirements, and, and we want to meet our requirements, which is to take care of that water and put it in the right place. We can sell that water now, which we couldn't do before.
That's right, and I'd be happy to buy it.
We can sell it downstream to people who will buy it at whatever the market price is. That's something we gotta get smart about. We've never done this before.
Right.
We gotta learn about it, and we gotta, we gotta get to the point where we can have an intelligent, informed conversation, and then we're ready to make a, a good contract. That's my advice.
I totally agree with you, and, and I had the benefit of being able to discuss this at pretty long length with Scott before this, and these are the exact same things that he was talking about, the things that we needed to look into. So, I think that he's proven himself to be very trustworthy and very thorough on this kind of thing, and he'll bring it back to us, just like he does with, with everything. Okay, so was there any other discussion on that? You good? So, I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. All right, thanks for coming down and hanging out with us.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're not gonna get the check now.
You don't get the check now.
But maybe.
I do know somebody who could talk to you about conservation easement stuff.
Yes, I, I've had lots of conversations with that. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, Bradford.
Thank you, Bradford.
All right. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on adopting an ordinance canceling the general election for the places of mayor District 1 and District 2, declaring the candidates elected.
So moved.
Great. So, just for context, this is because these positions ran unopposed. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on adopting an ordinance canceling the special election for District 4 and declaring candidate elected.
So moved.
I'm sorry, who was second?
Who was the second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Kerry did.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And just to let, just to let y'all know that are going to be appointed, or, I'm sorry, when we have the oath of office, it will be the first meeting in May, and then we will send Mr. Steinoff.
So, even though you didn't have an election, your office continues through the time period that you...
Yes, I understand that. But I was gonna ask that question, though. The, so the swearing in is, is the first meeting and...
May.
The second meeting... The second meeting would be Mr. Mercer's first officially.
Well, usually-
At least that's the way.
Usually it's swapped in the same meeting, right?
Well, for a general law, city, the new officer would take, it's going to be that Friday afterwards.
Okay.
For, so like, three days, he's not officially doing business.
Okay.
But I think it's like-
I'm asking you to know when I have to be here, yeah.
Well, you can't have to be at that meeting.
If you want cake, you gotta be at that meeting.
Yeah.
It'll be on, I'm sorry, it'll be May the ninth, and then officially, I want to say it's the twelfth, but I'll double check when we get in the law.
Thank you. I think I have it on my calendar.
What's that? You had a question?
Didn't we, like, the last time you said, Kate was sitting next, did you sit next?
I sat next to Todd that meeting, but I didn't participate in that meeting, yeah.
And he can do the same thing. It may not be a real heavy meeting anyway, but, because we have to celebrate.
Not to celebrate.
That's right, that's right.
All right, so next item is, consider and possible action on establishing a city policy related to public restroom standards. Now, I wanted to address something right up front. Councilman Dyer had asked to look at outsourcing for cleaning of the restrooms at, I think it was specifically the regional park.
All parks.
At all parks. And the role of, if you look even at our ordinance, or at the roles and responsibilities in a general law city, we are here for policy. To me, this is much more of a tactical item that is implementation of policy. And so the reason that I wanted to put it on here like this is because I think that it's, when you look at, the reason that we're doing the balanced scorecard is because that sets the standards by which they would come back with. And we can come up with ideas. These would be initiatives that would help them out with it and talk through these items. But I think that ultimately, we provide staff with, this is what our standard of cleanliness needs to be. It gives them a target to hit instead of going directly and saying, you need to outsource this because then they have no target to hit, there's no parameters to meet, there's no way to make sure that that is a consistent thing. So I wanted to put it out as a higher level discussion. So, Scott, did you have more on that?
No, again, this is a policy, so, you know, in my manner of thinking, policy is custom and practice absent a written policy, right? So that's part of why I provided what I provided. It turned out I was too thorough and provided too much information, but that was the thinking behind it is, you know, if you're going to set a policy for how often you want the bathrooms cleaned, or you know, some kind of standard, and that's going to be a written policy that you want affected by staff, then absent a policy, what you needed to know is, well, where are we today? What's happening at these parks today? How often are they being cleaned right now and by whom? So that's the reason that was provided to you.
And the other thing is that if we don't establish that policy of what that cleanliness standard is, even if we do outsource it, how much do we outsource? How many hours? How many days? Which days? What are the circumstances? So absent that policy, there's really nothing to help us through that next step. To be able to, he would say basically, so you want me to write a contract, what do you want me to write the contract for? So unless we set that standard, what does that look like? Or work with staff as they develop a standard, propose them, we can make recommendations, kind of like what we do with pretty much all of our policies here, is come up with that standard. What does it need to look like? And I will tell you, the cleanliness at the regional park restrooms is a great opportunity for improvement.
It sucks.
That's another way to look at it. That's exactly what I said. Consistently. So it is the biggest complaint that I have, out of all of the complaints that I receive from the regional park, the biggest complaint is the restrooms. Agreed, a hundred percent. So I think that we need to look at, what does that standard need to look like? So during, is it during ballgames? Is it, do we want to take recommendations from our parks director on what it would take to keep that clean? And do like a good, better, best kind of thing? I'm going to hand it over to you because I really, this is something that you're passionate about and you want to make sure that this happens, so let me throw across the-
Now that you've already spoken against my plan, my purpose tonight was to come to you and tell you that the thing that I have learned the most at being a liaison to the Parks Board is that restrooms are not maintained appropriately for the activities in the park on a consistent basis. Not just the regional park. I'm talking about all thirteen restrooms that are in parks. Now, my objective was to have a policy discussion, okay? Not to sit here and build an RFP and decide how many times a restroom needs to be cleaned. My objective is to have a policy discussion to answer a simple question. Who should pay to clean the restrooms in our parks? When the primary users of the restrooms in the parks are the park patrons, not the residents of the city. And it's not done well now. The way it's done well, the way it's done now is there are there are people in the Parks and Rec staff that are given the task to go and inspect and clean restrooms. And I believe I'm correct in saying, I asked Scott to review it today, but I don't know if he's finished, but I do not believe there is a single word in any job description of any employee in the Parks Department that says that they're going to be responsible to go out and clean restrooms, thirteen of them, multiple times a day sometimes, weekends, et cetera. I don't think that janitorial description exists in any job description. So that's kind of a pet rock with me. If you decide that you want to leave it like it is, I think we should still think about correcting the job description so that we tell people what is going to be expected of them and pay them appropriately. That's a side issue. But let's go back to the main issue. They're not getting cleaned. Now, we tried this before. Some of you that have been here a long time, you know, we had contract cleaning of restrooms in the park, and it died because it wasn't effective. Let me finish first, okay, before we start discussing, and then I'll shut up.
Well, I want you to discuss, I was going to correct something, but that's fine.
Okay. But what I'm proposing to you is that we should simply answer the question, who should pay? We should establish a policy. And if we decide that the people who use the restroom should be the ones that pay for it, then we give guidance to the city staff and let them go for, as you say, and find a way to implement the policy. I don't want to tell them how to do it. But I had a lot of discussions with them. If you want to come down to the Parks and Rec Board, you'll hear it all the time. And there's, it's going to be a difficult thing for them to write an RFP. But if they write a good one, and it's well thought out, and you think about it, let's just use one example, the RV park. They have their own restrooms, and they're the only ones allowed to use them. There's a big sign that says, RV people are the only ones that can use these restrooms. So why can't we figure out how many RV users we have in a year? And then divide the cost of the contract up by that amount of money, and add that amount of money to every day stay. And the cost gets paid for. Within the park itself, we have, in our budget, we have a section on the comprehensive fee schedule where we have rental rates for everything in the park, from the swimming pool, the RV park, down to the lowest table. We follow the same philosophy. We let the Parks Director and the board figure out, how many users a year do they have? And what do they use? How many of them are athletic teams? How many of them are this, that, and the other thing? And then adjust those rates so that they pay their fair share of the proportional cost of the contract. And it gets paid for by the users. Same thing in the swimming pool. We know how many people swim. They all use the restroom, so why can't we take the total number of swimmers, divide the cost to clean the restrooms in the pool, and add that on to the fee? So it's built into the fee. There should be a model for everything we do in the Parks Department, and a pricing model. And they can adjust that model. So my recommendation to the council is, you know, I think we should take this burden off of the employees. I think we should establish a policy that says, we're going to have the customer pay the bill, and we're going to direct the staff to implement it, and then we're out of the business. So I'll shut up with that.
All right. Councilor King?
First, how many bathrooms did you say there were?
Thirteen.
And what, you might tell me where the thirteen was.
There's four in the regional park, two in the RV park, two in the SP. The pool, swimming pool, four in Lions Park, and one right out here. There's thirteen restrooms that this person would be responsible to clean. Now, Deborah informed me that this one is currently under the contract that does this building.
Right.
But it's really the restroom for Houston Square.
I understand. What I was going to say is, my recollection is, we used to have a cleaning service to clean the bathrooms. And Devin came to us, I think it was after Scott was here, before Scott, and he said, listen, if you, I want to get rid of that contract, but I can hire an extra employee, and that way we can take care of the cleaning. If that's not working, then that's something for us to consider. But that was-
It's not working. I can tell you, it's not working.
Was it working before, when we had contractors?
It was better than it is now, but it wasn't good.
Yeah, I think, and also, Deborah helped me, but they only came by once a week.
That's right. There's the problem.
No. I can say no. Of course, here is, with this building, the contractors also did Lions Park, and they did several, I don't know if she did it every night or at least three times a week. The park itself is very large, and they came in, I want to say it was once a day.
Oh, really?
If I'm not mistaken, it was once a day, and it was seven days a week. But it was a huge, huge, because once a day, that might work, but then you have everybody throughout the day.
Right, but I do remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, the discussion was, if we get rid of the cleaning services there, then I can hire, I'll hire an employee to do this, and it's going to save us money.
And they did it, I know the RV park, it may not have been every day, but Joanne that does ours did that also, the RV park. And so, but they cleaned it, I don't know if it was every day or three times a week or something. But when they bid these jobs out when we first started, they did know how many ti, I mean, you know, it was in the description.
Devin will tell you, with the soccer leagues and the other leagues, there are some days where they will have to be cleaned three or four times. These kids go in there and vomit all over the place when they're playing soccer. I mean, it just can't be done with one cleaning a day. But that's not every day. But they have a pretty good idea how many a year.
Well, tied into the same thing, her, Monday, I walked the park at ten o'clock in the morning, and there was trash all over the place. I mean, and I'm on the ground, the animals had gotten into them. And, but by ten o'clock, the trash was still all over the ground. And so I don't know, and I assume we don't have anybody watching it on Sunday, but even then-
We do.
By ten o'clock-
We have an employee that's working.
By ten o'clock on Monday, you'd think that someone would have already picked up the trash on that. So I think it's the bathroom, but it's also this whole issue about somehow-
It's a large job. I know, it's a very large job.
It's a massive job.
Just for that one part.
So that's all I wanted to say.
Any other comments?
I have to agree, we did take Devin's advice, and he said, yep, hire a body, they'll take care of it. When the guys come in to get stuff to repair the bathrooms, because somebody went through and busted something out at the park, or graffiti, or what have you, that, I mean, they're slammed because they're also taking care of other things. We, and that's one of the reasons, I think, why the Parks people were just kept to the parks, because they were so busy.
How many people do I have back then in the park?
Full-time person, Mike Meeks, who was also the supervisor, we had a camp host. And I think that's it.
Okay.
And of course, back then also, at one point, we had a contract for mowing. Yeah.
Right.
We had contract mowing out, and so we didn't have a person for that. Right. Then they finally started, we switched that up a little bit, because for a long time, we had McBay's mowing service, because they mowed-
Sixty thousand a year.
The soccer fields.
But I'm not talking about anything except the restrooms.
Yeah.
That helps me understand why, okay, so we have, now we have Jonah and Larry, and you've got the Parks Director, and then Bree, who's an admin, so I've got kind of four people that are in that Parks area that really were two-
If you had a contractor-
Those two, though, those two are being sent all over the place.
Right.
And not being kept on parks.
Yeah, they're doing maintenance, right away maintenance.
Oh, I know, because they come by the stuff and tell me which department to apply it to.
See, their job would become doing what they were hired to do. Go inspect the restrooms based on the activity level of the park. That was something they have to set up. If they're having a tournament, they may have to inspect the restrooms three, four times a day.
Well, this goes back to, I think this goes back to, again, the kind of the balance scorecard type stuff, where we're prioritizing need and service levels. And generally, there are costs associated with those, and there's trade-offs, right? So right now, we're doing all the right away maintenance. I think, I think one of the reasons you see the lower level of service is what Councilwoman Martinez is alluding to, you've got these guys going all over the city, because I know they're doing our facilities. They generally, we generally try to keep streets with streets and parks with parks. There's very rare exceptions to that. But the Parks people themselves, they're doing facilities, they're doing all of the Parks maintenance, you know, they're doing the mowing at all the parks. There's just, there's a lot that they're trying to handle, and I think that's the issue. I think they're overwhelmed.
There's one other thing I need to tell you in full disclosure. When I wrote my questions to Scott on Saturday, I sent copies of them because I had this issue in there. I sent a courtesy copy to Patrick Connor, the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, also sent it to Helen Delavan, who's the Friends of the Park chairman. I am now on a wanted list, and there is a bounty on me. I have been hearing from Helen nonstop for two days. And I have to go to a meeting in here tomorrow night, and they're probably going to lynch me. They don't agree with anything I've said to you. I tell you that right now. They don't agree with any of that. But they don't make policy, we do. And so this is why I want to bring it up to us. This is a decision that could be implemented if we decide to make a policy, and they will do it, and they will do it well. Or we can just keep doing what we're doing, and our restrooms, the brand-new hundred and seventy thousand dollar restroom that we just purchased will be a dump within a month.
I will tell you that I do not believe that insourcing versus outsourcing is a policy. That is a tactical method. The policy is, what is the level of service that you want to achieve in the restrooms? And beyond that, it is up to staff to come back, because-
But that's not what I'm proposing. That's your idea. My idea is to ask the question-
That's overstepping. That is overstepping into tactical operation.
That's your opinion. Your opinion of tactical and strategic is way different than mine. We're never going to agree, just like Helen and I are never going to agree on this restroom issue. That's not the issue. The issue is, do we want to establish a policy for Parks restrooms and make them better, or don't we? That's all I really ask.
So two of the groups that are the most adamant about having great facilities, great amenities, great parks, why do they not agree with what you're saying?
I don't know. That's part of the reason why it's so hard to go to a Parks and Recreation Board meeting and understand what's going on. And then when you get the report after the meeting, and they send us something, there seems to be all kinds of misinterpretation about everything.
And I think that that's part of your responsibility as the liaison to the park, is to understand where that disconnection is. And I think until we get there, like, we talk about everything else, we need to be able to rely on our boards and our commissions as our extension of, extension of city council, because- because they're out there, they're living this day-to-day, they're talking to the people that are experiencing this. And so if you're telling me that you wanna suggest something that is totally against what the people that are the biggest advocates for it, I think that we need to go back and do some more research on that and figure that out. But I do think that it's important for us to improve that level of service by helping establish some policies that are the cleanliness policies of the park. And if, across the board, outsourcing is more expensive than insourcing. You can pay an employee a lot less than you can pay a contractor, because you're paying not just for that employee from the contractor, you're also paying for the, the cost of transportation, you're probably paying for the cost of markup. They're making money off of this.
I, I would be careful with that notion, simply that, you know, there are certain situations where outsourcing makes more sense.
Absolutely.
Waste management is an example. We don't have trash trucks, we don't operate trash trucks, we don't have a trash department. Well, we could. We could offer that service in-house, we could use outsourcing. So there are certain instances where outsourcing actually is a better option for a number of...
But the reason that we outsource to waste management is because the cost of the vehicles, they're able to advertise across several different cities.
Right.
So there are definitely areas where it is, it's prudent to outsource. But if you're talking about one thing that is, I mean, if you're talking about spiking, like, you're saying, we're gonna have a need for five people for four hours a day, only this amount of time for this spiky kind of stuff, absolutely. But if it is a consistent across time, it makes a lot more sense to insource it. But that, I think, is a tactical measure.
Ready?
Please.
I don't wanna annoy her.
That's all right. You can do it. I don't want, just tap me on the shoulder.
I think Scott has an idea that we all think that there's a problem with the bathroom cleaning and the park cleaning. And to me, just talk to your staff, and, you know, Devin, and come up with a plan and tell us how you're gonna improve it.
Yeah, I think, I think, unfortunately, I think it could come down to a staffing issue, but yes.
Yeah. I do know we haven't picked up no additional parks, no additional mowing, no anything else.
I thought you, I thought you said we had picked up mowing. I thought y'all said we had picked up mowing.
No, well, you, beyond what Kyle and Abay, when Kyle and Abay was doing it all.
How many hours?
And Larry Heiner came to, uh, Lynn and Big Day.
How many weeks, or, you know, how much time was that mowing taking?
Well, you pulled the contract, it was basically in the summer, it was, well, anyway, you had the contract. But what it was is, and that was when Larry Heiner came to us on council, and he said, listen, if we kill this contract, I can hire a person part-time, and that way I can use him to do the mowing, and I can buy a lot more. So we authorized it to buy more. Of course, we didn't talk about pickup truck and the trailer and everything else, but, you know, that's way back then. So he was gonna pick up somebody part-time, and that way he would be able to justify, and that was where all it came from. So we did pick up half a van on the mowing, because that was where that happened then. And I realize you have a facility repair person, and the facility repair person is in the Parks Department, you know, that goes and changes light bulbs.
Yes.
You know, so that, that...
Larry and Jonah do that.
And they go to all the facilities, not the parks. They go, and they fix...
No, and I really, so, and of course, Mike Meeks, I think, way back then, did, didn't he replace all the light bulbs and things like that for?
He would.
Yeah.
He would. He was one person.
So I'm not opposed to hiring another person, if that's what we need. But kinda like Herb says, somebody needs to have a job description that you gotta clean the bathrooms, and nobody likes cleaning bathrooms. But it is, it is a very big impression, but it's not just the bathrooms, it is the, just the whole thing about the park. I don't know. I just, instead of a policy, I think, I would just vote, you know, you know we got a problem, figure it out, you're Superman.
Establish a standard, a standard of cleanliness. What is going to be the acceptable standard? And have a checklist posted at each restroom, what have you, that whoever comes and does it has to sign off on. And so if there's a spot inspection done, and it's mucked up, and so-and-so was supposedly here, because they would have to put their initials in time, well, then so-and-so would be called to the carpet and say, hey, what the heck?
I guess you go into a filling store or a foodie store these days, and you have those things, someone's supposed to dish them. But the standard is, it's supposed to be clean. No, it doesn't have to be mopped every day, but it needs to just...
Oh, yes it does. Oh, yes it does.
Okay. Don't end mopping every day.
Well, I think that's, I think that gets down to kinda the policy of, well, what defines clean, you know, what is the expectation? And I think, at least that was my interpretation of what Councilman Dyer was trying to get towards, was, you know, what is the standard of cleanliness that the city expects at its outdoor restrooms? And then we, staff, needs to figure out how to do that, like Councilman King is saying.
But shouldn't we ask the Parks Recreation Board to come up with that standard, instead of us coming up with that standard? And how do we expect them to come up with the standard?
I think what I'd like to see is, to understand what our, what our cleaning policy is, how often do they get cleaned, how do we make that decision, what days, what times, how many times per day? And we can take a look at that and, and work it from there.
Is it different on tournament weekends?
There is no policy, that's the problem.
Tournament weekends.
My point exactly. That is a part, if we don't have a policy for that, I think that's a problem.
Yeah.
And so if, let's find out, is there any policy? How does, how are those, those hours, those worker hours dedicated to the parks, when does it happen? And what, what happens on, you were saying, like, Easter weekend?
Tournament weekends.
Tournament weekends?
Holiday weekends.
A good example of the problem you're gonna have, two meetings ago in the Advisory Board, there was a great deal of discussion about, we're raising the rates too high for teams to be able to function. We have to cut the rates, we have to cut the, and they cut them. So there's, there's a, there's a different area of interest. The people on the board, they have kids, they participate, they're looking out for their thing. And then you have the other viewpoint of, we're the stewards of the park, so we need to impose appropriate standards. And they're not consistent, they're not congruent. And, and I don't believe that it's gonna get solved from the bottom up. I think they need help from the top down. And that's what I'm suggesting, is that we impose a policy that forces them to think this through, as you said, and, and come up with a reasonable approach to doing it. And then it becomes a matter of economics. Can we pass that cost on, or can't we? Seems to me like we probably could.
So Texas does have a, a standard, Title 26, Health and Human Services, Part One, Health and Human Services Commission, Chapter 748, Minimum Standards for General Residential Operations. All bathrooms must be maintained in good repair and kept clean at all times.
At all times.
You must provide bathrooms located on the same floor or location out, so at all times.
Yeah, I don't know what you're reciting, but I, I think, yeah.
So if it's dirty, it needs to be cleaned?
Exactly. So we may have to relook at that.
Well, again, how often do you want them to, that's the issue. So right now, we're going once a day. You want, and, you know, I think the statement was made earlier, when there's games, you can go in there, and twenty minutes later, there's an issue.
Right.
And if you're only checking it every hour, or you're checking it twice a day, or you only check it, at worst, once a day, you won't find that problem...
Until tomorrow.
Until the next day. Right? So, yeah, again, that's kinda what we're getting down to, is, do we want someone in the parks? If we had someone in the parks, in regional park, all the time, and that was their only function, was to be in that park, I don't think this would be a big of an issue. The fact of the matter is, we have people who spread them. They are not in that park all the time.
So I think that, I think either way, we just need to find out what are our standards. Let's take a look at those, and let's get a good, better, best. Devin knows how to run this park. He has been absolutely phenomenal about this. And you talk about making sure that things are paying for, for themselves, I think that he's done a phenomenal job with that.
And increased his revenue by a hundred and fifty percent?
Yeah.
I only know that 'cause he's told me about it eight times a day.
And then he spends it.
Sounds like he's fucking for an extra person.
Well, the issue is, he's still not, you know, what I pointed out is, you have parks very often subsidized. So, and there is a market component to charging rates. If we could just simply say, well, the payers are gonna recoup the cost, that'd be great, but it doesn't always work that way. So, and I think the best case example is, is like winter swimming. You know, we couldn't put that burden on those few swimmers, we need time to make that work over. And RV parks, kinda the same way. We're at, we feel that, market-wise, we're at the right fee. If we go raising that fee, what's gonna happen is, usage will drop. Right? And then you have even less money to put towards the restrooms. So there's things like that to consider. But if we improve RV park, we make investments there, well, what, how much does investment cost? What did you recoup? It comes down to economics, as Councilman Dyer rightly stated, and that's just something that we'll have to do. So I think the guidance here was, you know, help us understand what your standard is. Overall, what I hear is, we just need to do a better job of keeping the bathrooms clean, and we need to be able to convey, in a concise way, what that's gonna cost. Whether it's an opportunity cost in other areas, whether we can outsource some function that's currently being done by this same group, or if we need to bring in more personnel, or what? What is the solution? So that's something staff will take on.
And it needs to be in somebody's job description, so they're held accountable.
Well, that's where I...
Other duties as required.
Well, cleaning facilities, I'll just, cleaning facilities is mentioned in the job descriptions. It's not explicitly stated, we'll clean bathrooms. Right? But we've not, first off, there's, there's no one that works in parks that doesn't know that. Our crew is extremely dedicated, and they know that that's their requirement. So that's not the issue. Could it be explicitly stated? Absolutely, we can add that. But I don't think adding that is gonna change the root issue, which is what we're dealing with right now. Right? And it is understood, whether it's in there or not, people who've been hired know what they're expected to do.
So you'll come back to us with...
Yeah, I need to, well, I'm not gonna promise to bring it back in two weeks, but we will look at, well, what would it take? What do we need to do to keep someone there? 'Cause I, what I think amounts to is, we have to have someone there during all, every open hour of the park. That's what I think it's gonna take.
On a weekday, though, you know, weekday, maybe once a day, but...
That's what we're doing today, and it's not enough, is what I've been told.
Well, Monday morning, though, because this is what was left over from Sunday.
Yeah, but again, what time of the day? Do you want, what's your priority? That's what I'm saying. We have to come back and tell you, here's what we're doing, and that's why I've attempted to do here, but I wasn't specific enough. I didn't tell you, do we have an actual set standard for what time of the day they're there? And are we dedicating a person to just doing that? No. The answer is no. They're being pulled off to do other things. So I don't believe there's a consistent, you hear, they're always doing this at this time at this park, because they're gonna prioritize what they have to do. And sometimes it's based on, well, what did, what were they doing yesterday? Right? That didn't defend them.
And tied into that, I think we need, I think we can afford the trash cans with the cover on, that the animals can't get in, because the animals are getting into these old plastic cans that we use, because we don't wanna spend money to do it. And it's spread all over, and that's where you see the animals. But like, very first thing, I think someone, I mean, it was a lot of trash all over. And then also, the trash cans were full of trash from Sunday the day before.
Yeah, that's someone not getting them cleaned. 'Cause, 'cause I believe, I have a very... But I believe getting trash is part of the, 'cause we have a weekend park attendant, that's what the park attendant is supposed to do on a weekend. So if that's not getting done on Saturday and Sunday, as it's supposed to, and it's carried over into Monday, then someone didn't do their job.
So I think what, what you're hearing is that either you come back and make a proposal on, like, educate us on what's being done currently, we can take a look at what's not being done. I feel like staff has the ability to do this, I know that there's opportunity cost. I think it's an important thing for us to do. And if not, then I think council's gonna go back and make some more specific recommendations. Does that work?
Fair enough.
Is that fair?
Sounds right.
Yeah.
Herb?
I know. We want clean restrooms. I think that's...
By the way, we laid the first, I ain't planning to attend with her, because the invite of the Parks Recreation Board meeting and whatnot. And the only reason I mention that is, if somebody's gonna be there, we'd have to have a notice go out.
So you're gonna clean up the blood?
Not gonna be there.
You're gonna clean up the blood?
We're gonna clean up the blood.
Yeah.
You're gonna drag them out?
I have my video out.
You're mopping your bucket.
All right.
As a comment, Sunday morning at seven twenty, there were two guys cleaning up all the RV stands, walking around, grabbing, picking up stuff.
Sunday morning?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure it was a nice day.
Not Monday.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, so if they were out there doing that Sunday morning, then the trash accumulated throughout the day, and that was the only time they went and did it, was, well, they do it in the morning. Anyway, there's stuff I need to find out.
And realize, Saturday, Sunday, this was...
We're just gonna put a camera up, it's gonna have facial recognition, and when we see Phil coming through, we'll, we'll...
We'll move daily, because Mary's an apple dog daily.
All right. Next item is executive session. We are not gonna go into executive session.
Correct. So I'll explain why. So we were gonna go into executive session, discuss NP Homes. We were informed this morning, I think around ten AM, if I'm not mistaken, that they did officially determine that they want to wait until the principal attorney returns from his vacation to review what has been put together. To say that staff is frustrated is a major understatement. You know, Clay and I spent our weekends trying to make sure this was gonna get done. We communicated to the seller and to the, to the developer that we would have it ready for the fourteenth, which we did. The law firm dropped the ball. This is a law firm that, by the way, we recommend to these developers to utilize. So I do believe that there will be some pretty strong conversations between Mr. Benford and Mr. Killen upon his return, because we were not at all pleased with how this has shaped up. It's very, very, very frustrating, especially in light of what we saw happen with Colson, where we bent over backwards, make sure everything was in line, and, and, you know, moved dates, called special meetings, et cetera. It was proposed by the developer that we call a special meeting, I flatly denied that, and said, no, if this isn't important enough for you to keep it on the fourteenth, then the next opportunity you're gonna have is the twenty-eighth. So it is, it's very frustrating. But for your information, the, the proposed agreement is in your binders or in your packets. You have...
I couldn't find it.
I just, oh, I thought you said you included it.
It's only the ordinance where we sent me, and the 360 guidelines.
Oh, okay, 'cause I was gonna say, I see some stuff there. So I'll make sure that gets uploaded, that the latest version for you to review. So you'll have two weeks to do that. There are a couple, it does buy us a little time to get our utility services agreements, some other things lined out. Those are usually, they're pretty boilerplate, so it's not a big issue. But I mean, kinda the good news is, if we do it on the twenty-eighth, at least we'll have all the exhibits intact and ready for your review. Whereas tonight, we would have been missing some of those exhibits. They aren't crucial, but we'll get those done. So I'll make sure that that's out. So I'll make sure that that's out. It'll be in the same link where you have your development agreements for council, so I'll drop it in there. It'll be labeled, "N.P. Homes Final Proposal," or whatever. Correct? Probably to today's date, because we don't know, when he gets back, maybe he'll have some additional changes. We'll see. If he doesn't, I'll be very upset.
All right, so we're going to skip the, we don't need to reconvene, we don't need to take possible action. The next item is discussion on future agenda items. So one of the struggles that we've had is trying to manage the agenda so that we can talk about, we have so many strategic things going on right now, trying to get all of those in the time that we have. But on the other side, there are a lot of, like, individual items that several of you have brought up to say, "Hey, this is really important to me. This is something that I really want to discuss, and something that, that I feel like I would represent the people better if we did like this." So Scott had a recommendation. I'm going to have him, based on his experience in other cities, he had made a recommendation on how to put an item on. Did you want to cover that, or did you want to...
Yeah, no, I have to do it. I've done it in the past, I think I mentioned this when I interviewed, but one of the things I've tried to do is, if I'm going to bring you a recommendation, whether it's a purchase recommendation, or a policy, or something else, I'll try to put it in a report first. Then I'll put it on the agenda as discussion only. And then it'll come back, depending on the nature of that discussion and the outcome, it'll come back for, for an action item. So I try to give you at least three looks at any, any item. You, you won't be surprised by that. Now, we haven't done a great job, frankly. I haven't done a great job over the last two years, because we've been hit with, like, for instance, a simple city contract. You know, that was one of those things that, we knew tech stop me was coming up, we needed to get a consultant, and there wasn't that approach that I would normally use. So there've been a couple of times where I feel like I've been rushed into doing some things. But what I'm recommending, what the mayor and I talked about, was these items that you're putting on the agenda, where you're going through this kind of process to request an item to the agenda, what I suggested is just put it on as a discussion item, no action. If someone has a request, get, reach out to the mayor as a council member, and say, "I would like to have this on for discussion, discussion only." Then, under the future agenda items, and this is where I have to check with attorney, because we're a general law city, to see if this would work, but under the future agenda items, you might have the same list for possible action, with the idea that, let's say, I'm going to pick on Councilman Kerry, he brings the leash issue, right? And he says, "I'm worried about tethering of animals." And he is able to articulately, articulate what his concerns are, to a point where he kind of explains to the council what he's looking for in the terms of a policy. And then you get down to the future agenda items, you'd have that same item for possible action, meaning, "We're going to go ahead and put this on in a future agenda," right? And there would be an up-down vote. So you would know from your council, from your fellow counselors, whether or not this was something that you all agreed with. Now, the issue is, you have open meetings laws, you have to abide by, so you can't get around, you can't just say, you know, like, right now, we're doing future agenda items, and it's kind of blink it. And there's no up-down vote for that reason, because the public has to have the opportunity to know that there could be a vote or some action taken on this, right? And the same kind of thing is true to discussion items. I've seen other cities do it, and they get spanked every time, where they just say, you know, some kind of generic report, right? And it doesn't have any information, and then all of a sudden, you're getting into the weeds and having a lot of discussion that wasn't contemplated, and so attorneys tend to slap your hand for that kind of thing. So would you see an issue with that, Cindy? I'm sorry to push you off the spot, because I don't think we talked about this.
So that works. You know, another way that I have seen this posted is, you know, the following items, you know, may also include, you know, discussion, well, may also include action after the discussion. So there are ways that you can set it up so that it, so that it works.
Yeah, you couldn't, you wouldn't have to necessarily wait until the future agendas item. You could actually make that as part of the...
Next item on the agenda.
The next time agenda, understanding that the only action would be taken, that could be taken, is to put it on a future agenda.
So I think what it is, is, maybe it's, it's something, we try and keep it to that same kind of three minutes, five minutes kind of thing during the item. Another thing, so Councilman Dyer's asked me for a few different things, and he, he just wants to get it out there and make sure that we are talking about it, but, you know, we're, we're depriorit, or I'm deprioritizing it. So it gives you that voice during the meeting, so you say, "I want to have it on the next meeting. I'll take three to five minutes to make my case." At the end, we'll say, "Okay, so we are going to put this on," or, "This is a high priority, a medium priority, a low priority."
I've not done this with the council before, it'd be interesting to see how it works out. I do think it has merit.
Why would, and I'm asking this question, if you're going to do this, and you're going to put the next item, to put it on the agenda, why wouldn't you just put a discussion item with possible action, and you know the action is to put it on?
That's what I was just saying.
Because repetitive, and it kind of gets...
Yeah, that's what I was just saying, that might be easier to do than, rather than putting it on a future agenda.
Well, and it kind of depends on how many of them are, there are. So if we've got five or 10 of them, then I think that we put it all in one, and we just...
You can direct staff in the discussion, direct, to put it on the next agenda item, per se, without voting?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think it would be good to have a vote. That's why I'm recommending the vote, because then it conveys to the count, the other, to that council person, what level of support exists for that item to be discussed. And it forces it, rather than, you know, basically putting it, making the mayor the bad guy, deciding, "Well, is this priority or not a priority?" It allows the council act as a single group to say, "Hey, this is something we do want to talk about, and we want to put it on." And you don't, whether it's the next agenda, or you could actually stipulate when it comes up.
The problem is, you understand what you're talking, I think, about at the end, like right here, but then you'd have to have a vote, a second, you have a motion, a second and discussion. Because you're either voting it up or down, then, if you're even going to put it on a future agenda.
But I think that's what, I think that's what she was saying, is, if you're, rather than doing what I originally proposed, which is discussion items and then future agenda items, each discussion item would be listed as discussion and possible action for future agenda.
Right.
To place on future agenda. So that would be the way it'd be worded, so that the action, potential action could be...
Bring it back in two weeks.
And then because it's on the agenda, anybody can make a motion in a second and see if there's support for it.
That's correct.
Or if nobody has any support for it, then you don't get a second, it goes down to the deep right.
Now, this doesn't, this doesn't mean that, like, some of the requests, we'll just put on, but anything that I feel like we need to, we need to put off, we need to deprioritize, that gives you a chance to bring it back up to the front, and it just, I think it empowers you.
I think we're going against the spirit of Texas law. Texas law gives an elected official the right to submit an agenda item. We have an ordinance that tells us how to do it. It tells us what's supposed to happen with it. We're not following that, because you choose not to put stuff on until it suits you, instead of in the first or second meeting, when it's supposed to go on. Why don't we just go back and follow the ordinance and do what it says, instead of reinventing another new system? I get very frustrated, as an elected official, that you constantly take my issues, and you either don't put them on, or you do like you did tonight. You bias the whole board against it before I even get to talk about it. And you do this over and over again. It just makes me not want to talk.
I do this as a prioritization.
You don't have the right to. If I have, if I want to put an item on the agenda, I have a right to get it on there. You don't have the right to stop me, and you're stopping me over and over and over. Now, I agree, half of my issues won't get a second. It doesn't hurt my feelings any. I had my opportunity to talk. That's okay. We followed the ordinance.
Does that tell you something, though? So this is about trying to do things together. We are a board of people, who are here to serve the people, and if we're not listening to each other, if we're not listening to our boards, if we're not listening to the people that we represent, if we're not listening to all of these people, then we're doing a disservice. And what I'm doing here is, I'm trying to help empower you. This is like, this is literally trying to help empower you to have your voice heard.
You're trying to tell me how to do my job, and I just don't appreciate it.
Fair enough.
Question?
Answer.
Ms. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Herb, I thought you told me one time, if the mayor doesn't put one of the agenda items on, that you then go and have to, you get one other city council for it?
You can, or if you wish. The ordinance says, he can either put it on the next meeting, unless it's too crowded already, and then he can defer it to the second meeting.
Only to the second meeting?
Yeah. It says it's supposed to go on the next regularly scheduled meeting. It doesn't say you can postpone it four meetings until he decides we want to talk about it.
Yeah, I don't know what the ordinance says.
That's what it says, I believe. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, this, this happened when you had somebody that was stifling all requests. And I'm not doing that.
Right. Well, I remember that, because I remember you telling me, because of a former mayor, that she would, and then you said, "No," and then you had to go get a signature.
I had to get a second councilman to suit her, to sign the same request, which can be done, too, because I can go talk to one other councilman, and if I can find...
But that's not in the ordinance?
No, it doesn't say that in the ordinance. It just says, it's supposed to be brought up in due course, and it gives the mayor the opportunity, I'm too, I've already got this meeting planned, I'll do it on the next one.
Due course, due course and the next meeting after that one are two different things. What does the ordinance say?
It says, "If you can't do it at the next regular meeting, it should be brought up at the next regular meeting after that."
Should.
Should be.
Not shall.
I couldn't tell you whether it should or shall.
Tell you what, why don't, let's do this. I wanted to make sure that we had this opportunity to talk about this.